Is she on, Madam Clerk?
I do not see her on. No.
Okay.
Just make a note that until she checks in and joins us that she's not present.
Correct.
All right, may I have roll call, please?
Carlson, Hertak, Clint Dennan, Henderson, Viera, Miranda, and Manasgako.
Here.
We have a physical call.
All right, may I get a motion to adopt the minutes from January 2023, 2025, and January 28, 2025? We have motion from Councilmember Miranda, second from Councilmember Clint Dennan. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? All right.
I just want to be clear, that's a total of what, three evenings? Excuse me, three separate minutes?
Yes.
Twenty-third, twenty-eighth, and the thirtieth. Yeah. The workshop in the evening on the third.
Five. Five, yes.
Five, okay.
Yes. Thank you very much. Okay, we have quite a bit of housekeeping. Item number two, there's a request to continue this to February 20, 2025. All right. Can I get a motion? Motion from Councilmember Miranda, second from Councilmember Clint Dennan. All in favor? All right. Item number three, FDOT does not have an update this quarter.
But I do. So I'm gonna update. There's a ton of stuff going on. So they just had a public meeting, so I do want to tell the community what they're doing, even if they don't want to.
So Councilmember Hertak will be presenting on item three. There's a 10-minute update. Item number four, we have a request to withdraw this item. Motion from Councilmember Clint Dennan, second from Councilmember Miranda. All in favor? Aye. Item number 22, Councilmember Viera has asked that this item be pulled and be heard first under staff reports in conjunction with item 67.
Yes.
All right.
Is it 22 or 67?
Yes. So we're gonna pull that. Item number 39 is a request from Michelle Van Loon that this be pulled from the agenda, removed from the agenda. We have a motion from Councilmember Clint Dennan, second from Councilmember Miranda. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? All right. Item number 56, there is a request for continuance on this item to a date that is to be determined, but we will have to make that official motion at 1:30, but I just wanted to give the heads up on that. Item number 57, there's a request to withdraw that. That's also an email that was received. We're gonna have to wait until 1:30 to do that. And then, we have staff reports. We have no administration update per the Chief of Staff. Item number 60, do we need somebody in person?
Yes.
Yes? Okay. All right. Item number 61?
No.
No? Item number 62? No. Item 63? No. Item 64? No.
Yes.
All right, there's a yes for 64. Item 65? Did you say yes on 65? It's with 66. It's a wastewater collection system repair project. No, no on 65 and 66 because they're connected. Item 67?
Yes.
Yes. Yes on 68. And we have, Chief Trip will be appearing in person. 69, there's a written report.
Just receive and move, just receive and file.
Move to receive and file. Item 69, from Councilman Carlson, second from Councilmember Clint Dennan. All in favor? Aye. Item number 70, there is a brief written response.
Who had this on the table?
Michelle Van Loon that came from, well.
You talking about 70?
We've gotten a lot of email about it in the last, and so I'm kind of curious.
You're curious to have a discussion about this?
Yeah, some folks in the community have asked us to delay it, but I think there's a lot of people in public comment today, and so folks asked me to just listen to public comment before making any motion.
All right, we're gonna leave it on the agenda. No official action. We're gonna listen to public comment because again, yeah, I've been receiving emails too, so.
And just so everybody knows, this was former Councilmember Goots' item, and he made this motion 2022, so three years ago. We're just, we've just been carrying it forward, so I'd just like to bring it to resolution. And by the way, he had a family emergency last night and can't be here this morning.
Okay, so we're gonna have to say yes on 70. Item 71 is a yes.
I'm gonna challenge here and say that 71 and 72 is a yes.
71 and 72 are yeses. Item 73 is a yes. Item 74, no.
Yes. I think we, yeah, I know, but I think we have some conversation to have about that.
Move to receive and file 75.
All right, move to receive and file 75 through 79? Any objection? All right, those are all written reports. We have a motion, motion from Councilmember Carlson, second from Councilmember Viera to receive and file 75 through 79. All in favor? Aye. All right, that concludes the housekeeping. Can I get a motion to approve the agenda in the addendum? Motion from Councilmember Clint Dennan, second from Councilmember Miranda. All in favor? Aye. All right, our first ceremonial activity is Councilmember Viera with our Police Officer of the Month.
Thank you. Good morning, Council. We have here for Detective Ray Figueroa, and I believe Assistant Chief Owen is gonna be presenting. Go ahead, sir.
Thanks, sir. Morning, Council. We're here to recognize Detective Ray Figueroa. He's a 10-year veteran of the Tampa Police Department, was recently promoted to detective back in August of 2024. Just a few of the incidents that he's been involved with since being promoted to detective. On August 16th, an unidentified subject struck the victim with a blunt object, causing significant injuries. Due to the injuries, the victim was unable to cooperate with the investigation. Detective Figueroa, on just his second day as a detective, responded to conduct the investigation. He collected videos from the area and positively identified the suspect. The defendant was taken into custody two days later, where Detective Figueroa was able to obtain a confession to the crime. On September 19th, 2024, the subject robbed the Grove Financial Bank. Detective Figueroa responded as the only assigned detective. With a great sense of urgency, the defendant was located within two hours. Detective Figueroa authored a search warrant for the defendant's department and recovered evidence of the robbery. He also obtained a confession in this case. On November 5th, 2024, officers responded to an apartment complex where they located a male suffering from gunshot wound. Detective Figueroa assumed the investigation. The victim provided limited information and could not provide any definitive leads. Detective Figueroa worked that case for more than a week reviewing videos and conducting follow-up interviews. He identified the suspect and the vehicle he was driving. Through investigative means, the defendant was taken into custody. Detective Figueroa, again, obtained a confession. He also got the defendant to identify himself as the shooter in the video. On December 8, 2024, officers responded to the West Hillsborough Juvenile Detention Center, where a delayed missing person report had been made. It was determined that a juvenile had escaped the facility. The week prior, the missing inmate was charged with first-degree murder. Detective Figueroa led the investigation, which developed an address for the juvenile was believed to be hiding. Detectives responded, were able to retake that defendant into custody. In the first four months of his promotion, Detective Figueroa has been assigned complex investigations involving violent offenders. He single-handedly investigated three of these cases, resulted in post-Miranda confessions. For his efforts, we recognize him as a Tampa Police Department Officer of the Month.
Before we formally honor you, you know, we have some folks here who want to give you some gestures of appreciation.
Appreciate it.
Morning, Councilmember Ann Barkley, Tampa PBA Detective. Great job. We were preceding you with this plaque.
On behalf of the Strass Center for the Performing Arts, I'm Mary Dillon. Thank you very much for your service. On behalf of the Strass, please accept some tickets to upcoming performance and enjoy yourself. Thank you.
Good morning. Good morning, Council. Hi, congratulations. My name is Lori Osborne, and I'm with the Florida Orchestra. And on behalf of the Florida Orchestra, we thank you for your service. Thank you for your quick thinking and your skill set. We are a safer community because of you, so thank you so much. We would love for you and your family to come and attend an orchestra performance this season, and I look forward to seeing you. Thank you.
Thanks so much.
Good morning, Council.
Good morning, Chief. Good morning, Detective Brian Ford with the Tampa Bay Buccaneers. And your story is remarkable, and what you and your family do and sacrifice for this city. We have a little tradition out at one Buccaneer place. Anybody that goes over and above gets a game ball. So I'm here on behalf of the Glazer family and our entire organization to present you your custom game ball. So thank you very much for your service, sacrifice, and all that you do.
Thanks so much. Thank you.
I always hate going after the game ball. I'm Mary Lee Bailey. I'm here on behalf of the Board of Zoo Tampa, and this is.
I'm Mark Eni with Zoo Tampa.
Congratulations, man. Way to hit it right out of the gate, you know? That's really awesome. And apparently, you have a really knack for getting those confessions, which is even great, because it saves us more taxpayer dollars of getting those guys locked away. Anyway, really impressive story, and thank you to everybody who serves. You're all my heroes. I just introduced my teenage daughters to the old series, The Rookie, and they're hooked. So we watched like three episodes last night, so they're gonna follow my footsteps in loving the police and honoring the police. Mark will tell you what your gift is from the zoo today.
All right, well, we've got a family membership for a year to the zoo, a couple of zoo choskis. This is an African painted dog. It's appropriate today because they are the most successful predators in all of Africa. So they get their prey about 80% of the time, whereas lions, for instance, get their prey 20% of the time. So, and you can see them at the zoo, so.
Enjoy it and good health.
Thank you.
Good morning, Council. Jill Watecki with Tampa Theater. Thank you for the sacrifices that you and your family make for the betterment of our community. So on behalf of the theater, this is an annual membership for you and your wife, and we hope you'll come see us at Tampa's Majestic Movie Palace.
Morning, Council.
Good morning, Detective Figueroa. I'm Grace Gonzalez. I'm here on behalf of the Gonsmart family and the 1905 family of restaurants. We'd like to present you with this gift card to thank you for your commitment to Tampa. Please enjoy yourself with your family. The Columbia, Ulele, Casa Santa Stefano, Catch a Full Mango Show. Thank you so much, and congratulations.
Good morning, Council. Leo Gary from Bill Curry Ford. Congratulations on winning this award. I truly appreciate everything that you do, all of you guys that put that uniform on every single day, that make these sacrifices for all of us, to keep the city safe for all of us. On behalf of Bill Curry Ford, I want to present to you a handwritten letter from Jennifer Curry herself with a gift card, and then a full free maintenance on your personal vehicle, and then some other goodies inside the bag. Again, man, congratulations, man. Truly appreciate you.
Good morning, Council. Mike McCarthy, Steph Tony Service. Congratulations. Thanks a lot. A job well done. So glad to have you a part of serving our community and taking care of the residents of our community. We definitely feel like a safer place because of people like you. So on behalf of Todd Step, Steph Tony, I present you with a gift card for dinner. Have a night out on us. Enjoy this time off, and thank you for everything you do.
Thanks so much. I appreciate it, sir.
Good morning, Detective Figueroa. My name is Mary Beth Williams. I'm here on behalf of Friends of the Tampa Riverwalk. We'd like to present you with a personalized paper on the Tampa Riverwalk. It'll be located in McDill Park. It'll say Detective Ray Figueroa, TPD Officer of the Month for February of 2025. In addition, some of our corporate members would like to present you with the following: Two one-hour complimentary passes to Riverwalk rental, two complimentary admissions to the Lost Pearl, two dinner for twos aboard the yacht Starship, $200 gift certificate to Splittsville, and two complimentary all-day passes to Pirate Water Taxi. We thank you for your service. Good job.
Thanks so much, sir.
Thanks so much for your service. Steve McAlini, I'm here on behalf of a variety of different folks who'd like to honor you, and don't lose these. On behalf of Yummy House China Bistro, we're providing you with a $50 gift certificate. On behalf of Jackson's Bistro, we're providing you with $100 if you can go over there on Harbor Island. On behalf of Meat Market in Old Hyde Park Village, $100. So Me Restaurant, $50 if you like Greek food. The Restaurant Group, Chicho Restaurant Group, $50. And Bella Brava, $50. So, you know, the chief's not here, so we can't take your gift certificates, but you do have to bring the letters with you. Congratulations. We appreciate your service.
Thanks so much. I appreciate that.
So Detective, on behalf of a really grateful city of Tampa, we really appreciate all your work and your sacrifice and everything that you do for us. Here you go, sir.
Thanks so much. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Actually, rub something out, so bear with me. Morning. First, I'd acknowledge that without God and His provision, this wouldn't be possible for that. Thanks to my wife and my family for the unwavering support. Long nights and hours away from home, this really makes it worth it, and I appreciate it kindly. To the councilmembers, thank you for the recognition of this award. Thanks for believing in the department, our staff, and aiding us in making the city safer and the best city and nation. To our staff, thanks for believing me. Thank you for promotion and recognizing me with this award. This isn't a one-man show, and this case, all these cases were solved with teamwork with our agencies. The FBI helped out with the cases as well, with the bank robbery. So just definitely want to say thank you to them as well, the guys that helped out with the cases. And lastly, our State Attorney's Office, Susie Lopez, her staff was incredible and very proactive with our investigations and ensuring that prosecution, these cases were filed and are being prosecuted. So thanks for that and aiding in making our city safe, and appreciate it.
Thank you for the sacrifice that you make every time you put on that uniform, and to your family, the sacrifice that they make. Thank you for keeping us safe, and this is certainly well-deserved, so congratulations. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, just take a moment as the room clears out. Mr. Ford. Item number three, Councilmember Hertak, you wanted to give an update?
Thank you. Ms. Sharf has a overhead, because there's a lot going on in this little area, and I think both folks who ride, drive this area and live in this area, it's very important. So she's gonna put something on the wolf cam. I'm sorry, I have to, you have to use the inflection now. It's no longer an Elmo, it's a wolf.
I agree.
I can't get it to focus, but.
Yeah, they'll get it to focus at some point.
Okay.
So this basically is, right now, you know, a lot of constructions going on in the malfunction junction area, and one of the main things was putting fencing under some of the overpasses. That's going on. Right now, the city of Tampa has several RFQs out, I believe, for some mural projects that are going to go on to the now-flat walls. Tampa Heights has been very concerned about the repaving of Tampa Street because it was supposed to include stormwater. It was a stormwater, they got a federal grant for stormwater. Unfortunately, due to cost overruns, it's actually gonna end up only being drainage repair, replacing damaged pipes and inlets, but they'll still be getting something with that. The bikeways of both Central Avenue and Ola Avenue have begun, they're working on Central Avenue first. Both projects should be done by 2026, which is a really long, or the end of 2026, which seems like a really long time, but I've been told that the lights are going in at MLK and Sly and Columbus, about three-quarters of the way through, so maybe middle of next Ms. Sharf, help me if I'm missing anything. I think that's kind of it, but I know that the Tampa Street and Florida Avenue are both gonna be repaved, and that's gonna be a lot of heartache for people who are trying to get downtown during rush hour, so I just want to prepare people for that. I don't know when that's, I believe that's gonna begin in next year or the end of this year. So there's a lot going on. I just felt like if they weren't gonna talk about it, I needed to. So, that's it.
Thank you very much. All right. Before we go to public comment, Mr. Shelby, do you want to, yes?
No.
Okay, Councilmember Henderson is online. Thank you very much.
And Mr. Chairman, if I can, pursuant to Council's rules, can Council please make a motion to permit her to participate remotely?
We have a motion from Councilmember Clint Dennan, second from Councilmember Carlson. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? All right. And Mr. Shelby, do you want to read the rules for public comment before I begin?
Yes, thank you. If members of the public wish to speak during general public comment, the opportunity to have filled out a speaker card and place it in the box is outside the chambers. One card per speaker. Each person speaking and submitting a card will be recognized by name to approach and speak. A three-minute time limit applies, and please print legibly. Names that cannot be read will not be called. Now, if you hear her to speak on something on the agenda that is designated on the agenda as a public hearing, there's a sign-in sheet instead. Please use the sign-in sheet. And again, if you need assistance, please see city staff. Speakers and members of the public are also reminded that they are to refrain from disruptive behavior, including making vulgar or threatening remarks, or making or causing disruptive noises or sounds, or displaying signs or graphics. And speakers are also to please refrain from launching personal attacks against any city official, staff member, or members of the public. The chair will rule out of order. Any person who speaks without being recognized or attempts to address the council from outside the speaker area at the podium, and persons failing to comply with council rules may be ruled out of order and, at the discretion of the chair, may be removed from the chambers for the remainder of today's meeting. Now, finally, council members should be reminded to refrain from engaging a speaker during public comment. And members of the public, please be aware that the city council does not take questions or have a dialogue with the speakers during general public comment. This is your opportunity to express your position. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right. So far, I have 27 speakers for public comment. Two of them are virtual. I'm gonna take the two virtual ones first that are online. The first is Mr. Michael Randolph, followed by Mr. Lawrence Premack. Mr. Randolph, if you're on, go ahead. You have three minutes, and then we'll take Mr. Premack next. Good morning, sir. Please state your name.
Good morning. Good morning. My name is Michael Randolph, and I'm with the West Tampa CDC. I'm here today to talk about our upcoming meeting on January 24 at 7:00 PM. It's gonna be online. The title is "Justification of Public Safety, Economic Development, Connecting the Dark: A National Discussion on What Works." We will be joined with representatives from high-crime neighborhoods from around the nation who will share their experience and strategy. This meeting presents a unique opportunity for us to learn from those success stories and discuss how we can implement our initiative as well. The topics that will be discussed is updates on major projects in West Tampa, the Technology Wealth Building and Job Creation Center. This is a strategy initiative to foster economic growth and economic opportunity using technology advancement, of course, AI. The next is home-based business, and then our community health and economic initiative. This discussion is on how to improve health outcomes and economic condition in the community. Next is looking at how do we explore economic-based solutions to crime. The West Tampa Cultural Center, this is a conversation about the presentation of establishment of a cultural center to address the history of West Tampa with a focus on the Black community. As you know, a lot of Black community has been engaged. And then next is a topic on what do we do and how do we bring home the Yellow Jack's Little League team? How do we bring them back home and help them with funding as well? And then finally, we'll be talking about the different avenues for funding to fund all of these projects. Thank you very much, and have a great day.
Yes, sir. Thank you very much. Mr. Premack, you're the. Next speaker, please state your name. All right, please unmute yourself, sir.
Can you hear me now, sir?
Yes, sir. Please state your name. Go ahead.
Yes, sir. I'm Larry Premack, the president of the South Neighborhood Association, which consists of 657 residences on the southern half of Harbor Island. At the January 23rd council meeting, council heard our reasons for more study of the proposed two traffic lights in front of the convention center. After Vic made his presentation, the consensus in the 28-minute discussion was the council agreed that this was not a viable solution. However, no motions were made. We emailed City Attorney Andrea Zelman in regard to who actually had the authority to install the $500,000 worth of traffic lights. Ms. Zelman responded that the head of Mobility Department, Vic Beatty, had the authority, and despite the survey of 4,000 Harbor Island residents, a traffic engineer's alternative suggestions, and the city council, the Mobility Department would be installing the light. We sent a broadcast to our residents informing them of this and asked them to write to the mayor to reverse this decision. The mayor's written responses to residents were incredible on so many levels. Subsequently, I watched with great interest the astounding testimony of the two brave Mobility Department employees of harassment and discrimination. Their statements were compelling. However, Mayor Castor responded to our residents on the traffic lights, stating that she was saddened by personal attacks on Mr. Beatty and said, and I quote, "Frankly, it is the personal attacks by city council and the community that have caused several good people to leave public service," unquote. This is a direct attack on city council and our residents to the presentation by Stephanie Pointers showing great individuals who have left the city, a number of which I dealt with personally, like Erica Moody, who was a superstar. When the council discussed this, investigating why these people left, no council member tried to lay the blame at the mayor's feet, yet the mayor is quick to point out to residents that it is the whole council and residents responsible for this mass exodus. Also during that meeting, Chief Bennett basically stated that there were no not-complete exit interviews done, if at all. If there were no exit interviews, and Chief Bennett is stating that he didn't have any interviews himself, then why is the mayor throwing the whole council under the bus, stating that you are the problem? The conclusion has been reached before the problem has been studied. Unfortunately, this is another example of the administration's obstinance to every opposing view. Please investigate this strain of the best and the brightest. I agree with Councilmember Miranda's assessment. Investigate and find any way you can to stop these laws. As I've said to most of you personally, I do not know why you do what you do, but I appreciate the fact that you do. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, we're gonna go to the in-person public speakers. Beverly Keeney is the first speaker, followed by April South, I see, I hope I'm saying it correctly, and Mr. Vern Garrett, Sr. Yes, ma'am, come on up. Please state your name.
It'll activate in just a second.
Good morning, Council. My name is Beverly Keeney, and I live in Forest Hills in North Tampa, and I'm here because a lot of my neighbors are working. They're hard at work and really can't take time off to come speak to you, so I want to be their advocate today as the Forest Hills neighborhood president. We've been in overdrive, you know, helping others in the neighborhood since the morning of October 10th. We woke up, and that's when the flooding began, after Hurricane Milton. And in the days that followed, the waters came up to the point that people in the, were being boat rescued in our no-flood zone. That's my little picture there. I asked you on city council to please help support my neighbors as soon as possible. It's been over 125 days since that morning, and I can tell you intimately the situation of many people who lost everything. Of the 60 homes that I count that were flooded near me, I keep in touch with a text group of about 34, and that's not easy to do since most of them are unable to live in their houses that still. And you can imagine what it looks like inside if you haven't visited yet. Those homes were flooded with both stormwater and sewage. And besides sharing leads and meeting dates, I encourage them not to give up. There are so many obstacles to returning to normalcy, and I don't even know if that's possible now. You know, we've provided foods, food, blankets. now. You know, we've provided foods, food, blankets, you know, the things that you need daily, a place to sit. We've even bought coats and shoes for people that needed them when we had the cold snap around the holidays. But, you know, their need didn't end with the beginning of the year. I mean, they're still broken. So most of run through their, all their own resources, and now they're in a deep financial hole. And they're just trying to hold on to and keep that generational house that they have in Forest Hills. So every bit of financial relief that they can get, it will help restore them and their home as well as preserve our neighborhood. And their stories, right when I look out my own door, I see, I live on Edison Avenue, and I live a block off North Boulevard and closer to that East Ridge pump. And whole streets were affected there on North Boulevard at one hundred and ninth, you know, so that's where Hamner Avenue, Otis, and the houses that surround the stormwater ponds there on North Boulevard, Newport Circle and Cliff. And that's just the beginning of it. And Curiosity Creek, where the backup generator and the pump did not turn on. There's more families and retirees that were flooded by the park, and it continues all the way up one hundred and thirteenth and Ola. So please drive by, guys. You know, like, you can see the empty houses and the pods in the driveway if they're actually in a construction mode. But as you hear the damage, it's just really widespread in our area. Number one, we want to let our councilman, Louis Fiera, know we appreciate his efforts to bring attention to the matter, you know, practically to everyone who would listen about what occurred in North Tampa. You've been phenomenal in communicating with individuals. I, I really especially grateful when I saw groups of people that were discouraged and angry, and you were able to stay late and hear what everybody had to say. And our collective big thank you goes to Tampa Mayor Jane Castor for putting this together, this important recovery package that we hope city council will unanimously support today. Top of mind is what happens differently as hurricane season begins again in a few months. The council's discussion on these items later is really what we all want to agree on, that the generators are there.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. I have some, I have some letters that I'd like for them to give you.
Give them to the attorney. She'll take them. Thank you very much. April is the next speaker. April South.
Thank you.
And then Mr. Vern Garrett, Sr., and Ms. Tammy Jackson. Yes, ma'am, please state your name.
My name is April South. Good morning, councilmembers. My husband's not able to be with me today as he has to work to be able to help us rebuild our home. We live in Florida, in Forest Hills off of North Boulevard. We were one of the homes that were, one of many homes that were affected by the water flood. We only fled, we fled from the inside, outside, everywhere. We took in almost three feet of water. Why? The bump, the pumps didn't work. The generators didn't kick on, or there were no generators. How are we going to assess that going forward? Are we going to be in a flood zone going forward? My mother lives in Seminole Heights. She came and stayed with us, thinking she would be safe in our own home, in our home versus her home that's a hundred years old. She ended up losing her car. We had to force her to evacuate. So the stress, I didn't protect my own mother staying at our house because the city failed us. What are you going to do? What are, what can be done to prevent this in the future? Our neighbors, there's one neighbor right across the street from us. Her home is sitting there vacant because she can't get any answers from insurance, FEMA, or anybody. We're fighting with FEMA to help us pay our rent on top of our mortgage that we're paying monthly, all of our utility bills. Insurance told us basically, you don't have flood insurance. There's nothing we can do for you. So how does the city of Tampa going to address these issues that are being left for many other people, many other neighborhoods that are sitting underwater still? Our front yard is like walking through a swamp. It's just muddy from everything. We understand that that's how the trucks had to pick up all the debris and everything to move the debris from it, not harming, harming other people. But now the front yards are ruined. We're not even being told that we can go back into our house until the end of March. We're going broke because we're trying to fix the problem that city, the city didn't understand that their pumps weren't working properly with all, everything. What do we do about all this in the future? How do we, how do we protect our residents? Is the mayor going to honestly help with a relief package? Will the people that have two working families, will we be able to qualify to get any additional assistance? How does this work? We haven't been able to get any answers. The building permits, yes, we can get them for free, but it's still taking weeks to be able to get them approved through the system. So we're being delayed on getting our homes rebuilt. We want to just go home. We want to be normal. We want to be like you. You sit in your home every night. You sit in your home every night. We don't. We sit in a hotel, or we're sitting in an Airbnb, wondering, when do we get to be like you and go home?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Vern Garrett, Sr., Tammy Jackson, and Hope Demetria Jackson. Good morning, sir. Please state your name.
Hey, good morning. I'm Vern Garrett, Sr. I'm here to speak on Agenda Number Seventy. I'm here with a whole bunch of supporters about the renaming of Fair Oaks Park. A lot of us grew up in Fair Oaks Park area, Jackson Heights, on Thirty-Fourth. My mom's house was built in nineteen seventy-one. I grew up in that house. I had two sisters. We all had kids, which was my mom, grandkids. Everybody go back to grandma's house. Everybody go to the park, which is known as Fair Oaks. We all are in favor of naming it after Mr. Artis Gambril. A lot, all of us basically grew up under Mr. Artis Gambril. So we came to social support because if we didn't show support, we didn't know which way it was going to go. We probably didn't want it to go Mr. Artis Gambril way. Then it becomes another name that none of us basically know who it's going to be. So we're here to show the support that, hey, if it's going to be renamed, Mr. Artis Gambril, hey, and thank you for redoing the park. It's, it's long overdue, but we accept it, and we believe it's going to be a beautiful park. State of the art is what we've been told, so we accept that. So if you're going to rename it, we're all in favor of naming it Mr. Artis Gambril. He was a good guy. He reared me the right way. He reared a lot of us the right way. So like I say, we're all here in favor of that. If it's going to be done, we hope that y'all make the right decision and rename it after Mr. Gambril. We're here to show the support, and if y'all don't see the support behind me, y'all might need to get my glasses because that's what we're here for. There's going to be some other speakers come up, talk after me. They're going to tell you their life at Fair Oaks. I played Little League football at Fair Oaks when I was a little kid. My, my son didn't play football, but my nephews played football at Fair Oaks. You got a lot of Fair Oaks coaches back here, cheer coaches, football coaches. Fair Oaks is what we know. Mr. Gambril is what we know. So if you're going to do it, go, please do it the right way, and we appreciate that. I'm not going to take up all your time because I know there are people who need to talk, but we're here to support Mr. Gambril.
Thank you very much. Tammy Jackson, Hope Demetria Jackson, and Cheryl Young. Good morning, ma'am. How are you?
Good morning. My name is Tammy Jackson.
Yes, ma'am.
And Mr. Vern pretty much stated everything. I mean, I grew up there, my children, my grandchildren, and all we know is Fair Oaks as Fair Oaks. So we would be appreciative if you all would consider naming it after Mr. Artis Gambril, my brothers, everyone. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you very much. Hope Jackson, followed by Ms. Cheryl Young and Ms. Valerie Bullock. Good morning, ma'am. Please state your name.
Hope Demetria Jackson. I am the granddaughter of the late evangelist Maul Jackson, and her and Mr. Artis were friends. And he basically raised me, and Fair Oaks is all I know. My children had the opportunity to play sports, go to the park, and I understand gentrification is going on in our neighborhood. But please keep Fair Oaks, either Fair Oaks or naming it after Mr. Gambril. We appreciate that very much.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you very much. Ms. Cheryl Young, Ms. Valerie Bullock, Mr. Tyrone Williams. Is Cheryl Young here?
Cheryl Young passed because everybody said what I need to say.
Yes, ma'am. Ms. Valerie Bullock, Mr. Tyrone Williams, and Ms. Shonda Williams. Good morning, ma'am.
Valerie Bullock, and I'd like to acknowledge this is Black History Month, and I'd like to give a shout out to all the people in College Hill Projects who, who poured into my life and tried to instill values in me to make me a better person. And I would also like to talk about, I know we have passed on this one time, and the project was approved for the new housing complex and the new innovative learning center on Yale and Columbus Drive. It doesn't matter what the project is or what's on the agenda. The people are being overlooked. No one never comes out to our neighborhood and have community engage with, engagement with us. We are building this. We would like to have y'all input on it. When I hit the streets, nobody never tell me anything about they want to go to school and get training for culinary arts. They want infrastructure jobs because that is where the money is at, and they'll be able to get a job to pay market value rent. Culinary, it might do it for one or two people, but it's not going to do it for everybody. We need to be better stewards with the money and put the money where it'll, it'll help the most amount of people, not just say, we're going to do this, we're going to get training, another job. We don't need training. On my street, we need paychecks. That is what we need. We need paychecks, and we need to be able to live. They got six and seven hundred thousand dollar homes over there on my street off of Thirty-Fourth and Twenty-Fourth Avenue. We need a job where we can afford those homes. We should not be outpriced out of our neighborhood because of our economic status. So if you really want to help the East Tampa residents, let's don't do stuff symbolically. Let's do stuff that's really going to help the people, and we want the same thing everybody else want. We want a good-paying job, a career, and we want a nice house. We don't have to unplug the refrigerator to turn the heat on. That is what we want, what everybody else want. And, and when it comes to East Tampa residents, we need to have entry-level position with wraparound services. What about the criminal background? I don't have good credit. Don't have a high school diploma. Okay, plumbing, all you need is a nice grade education for that. We need to stop getting disrespected, and who's ever getting funded, they need to come walk the streets and get community engagement. See what we want. Don't force nothing down our throat. That is disrespect. Thank you.
Mr. Tyrone Williams, Ms. Shonda Williams, and Bishop, I'm sorry, Clarice Crawford, then Bishop. All right, Tyrone Williams, next speaker.
First of all, name that's...
Oh, okay. Good morning.
All right, so Shonda Williams and Clarice Crawford pass?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
I'm Clarence Crawford.
Yes, but then, but then next you pass?
Yes.
Okay. All right, go ahead, sir. Please.
Good morning, good morning, good morning. My name is Clarence Crawford.
Yes, sir.
I am a resident of East Tampa, born and raised in the Fair Oaks community. I am the president of the Fair Oaks Reunion Committee. We, last year, we hosted our first Fair Oaks reunion at Rolet Park, which we had in attendance over eight hundred people. Now, all this renaming and all this stuff is new to me, so I'm just trying to get in where I fit in and try to catch up. But as Mr. Garrett stated earlier, we all grew up in this neighborhood, born and raised. Some of our parents have lived there for over seventy-five years. I still reside in my parents' house, which I've owned for thirty-one years. My house is approximately, maybe, six hundred feet away from the park. Now, the renaming of Fair Oaks Park, it is what it is. But like he said, all we know is Fair Oaks. We played there when it was just dirt. But if by chance it has to be renamed, we will accept Artis Gambril. Like some of them said, you know, we all come up underneath him. And when we was growing up, he was one of those people in our community to where, back then, the neighbors could whip the neighbors' kids. And that's just what he did. There was a lot of times we was growing up that we were chastised by him, and we got a whipping at the park. And by the time he went on Mac Bear and tell my parents, we got another whipping. So there's a lot of history there. There's a lot, a lot, a lot of history there. And the name Fair Oaks, as you can see, some of us are wearing our shirts today, but if you'd have seen the people in that park on November sixteenth of last year, you couldn't have gotten through that whole entire neighborhood. When I tell you we brought the city out, we brought the city out. We did everything the proper way, according to the city of Tampa, police, everything. We had not one problem. And we plan to do it again this coming November first. So we would just like for y'all to consider the people of Fair Oaks community, when you make a decision on changing the name. We love our Fair Oaks, believe it or me. Fair Oaks, no matter what you change the name to it, it's always going to be Fair Oaks because that's what we know. But if it has to be changed, we will accept the name Artis Gambril.
Yes, sir. Thank you very much. Shonda William, Shonda Williams passes, correct?
Yes.
All right. Clarice Crawford passes?
Clarence.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. All right. Bishop Michelle V. Patty, you're the next speaker, followed by Mr. Marvin Knight and Mr. Gregory Spears. Good morning, Bishop. Come on up. Please state your name.
Good morning. I, Bishop Michelle V. Patty. I first like to thank the Mayor Jane Castor, you, the council people, and especially Councilwoman Gwen Henderson, who represent District Five, and the SCANS organization that is building Fair Oaks. I initiated the beginning for Fair Oaks to be rebuilt. And I'm here today asking, and I think there's a little confusion, it does, the name does not have to be changed. And I do think those eight hundred people that attended this event should have been a part of due process. I'm just saying there should be due process, that you should allow to be open to all the residents of East Tampa. A lot of people did not know today that the name change was on the agenda. I received many phone calls when it was let out that you all were going to be discussing this. We had issues from the beginning of the community not getting the right information, the community fighting against each other because they was not aware of what truth was. There was a lot of propaganda that was going out. So I would like for it to be no confusion, no hard feelings, no people being upset. One of the names that they told me about, Ms. Dorothy York, who was a teacher, schoolteacher at Blake High School. There's a lot of names of people that kept that community intact, where people would like to see plikes of their names in the building, but they wanted to stay Fair Oaks. And everybody that has spoken say they know it by Fair Oaks. So when you say Fair Oaks, you know what park we're talking about. So this need to be taken to the community. The community should be notified of a hearing, and then the community should come out, and whatever name be selected, that's what the community stand by, majority rules. But just to do something today, I don't think it's fair to the people in the community who was not aware that this subject was going to be on the agenda. We don't do anything like this in any other parts of the community, so why should the African-American community be rushed to do something that they have no input? And that's where our problem comes in at, where people feel that they are not talked to, they're not given the correct information, and they don't have an opportunity to speak on the behalf. So we're, every name probably that would come out would be a great name. All I'm asking that you all delay this and give the community an opportunity to come out and let their voices be heard. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Mr. Marvin Knight, Mr. Gregory Spears, Ms. Katrina Vickers.
Good morning, good morning.
Good morning, sir. Please state your name.
I just want to speak real quickly.
Your name, sir?
Marvin Knight.
Thank you.
Okay. I can...
I can honestly say, over the years, not only been a part of East Tampa, the City of Tampa and doing events, I do know Mr. Gambrell, the late Artis Gambrell. He was always there to do things positive. When we did events throughout the city, not only was he an employee over forty years, but he really gave back and not just for the money that he was receiving from the city. He did a lot without money. The Fair Oaks Park, as everybody knows, is a bunch of oak trees and everything. So a couple got together, I think Peter Gay and him, and they came up with the name. Around his time and all the years he's paid, so it's a bunch of oak trees. The fairest thing to do is, why don't we just name it Fair Oaks? That's where Fair Oaks came from, okay? I say, and I know it's been a while on this thing here and he's passed. I think that the best thing to do, not wait no more, make a decision today. I would recommend Artis Gambrell Senior Park at Riverfront, I mean at Fair Oaks. Just you got Fair Oaks, that's the fairest thing to do, just like how it started. And Artis Gambrell, who have really stood up in the community and for the City of Tampa and the people to do the right thing. And I think that I appreciate the time, all and even the city council people, a lot of you guys, even especially Charlie, been there for all the different things and the other city council people. So we want to, you know, not only thank you for, you know, allowing the time, but I ask you to consider and to vote if you got to vote today. I would say have Mr. Artis Gambrell and the Fair Oaks in that name, but thank you.
Gregory Spears, Ms. Katrina Vickers, and then...
Katrina Vickers passed. Everybody say it.
Gregory Spears passed.
So Gregory Spears passes, Katrina Vickers passes?
Yes.
LaShawn Timms? She left. All right, Mrs. Stephanie Pointer, then I have Charlene Levy and Mr. Steve Michelini. Yes, ma'am, please state your name.
Good morning, Stephanie Pointer. It sounds to me like this issue needs to go back to step one. It's, council has changed the process for naming parks. Somebody needs to take this baby and this football and run with it and allow the community to give input from the jump. I know when Councilman Goode's made this motion, he, there wasn't a process. There is now. Let's go back to step one. Somebody on council, preferably Councilwoman Henderson would probably take this on and get some folks in the community and do the steps like we did to name the park in South Tampa. But I'm not up here today to talk about that. I just couldn't help but comment. Time is money, especially in housing. And, you know, this is something that was done in four years. Casa Belmar is one hundred percent affordable housing. I went back and checked the dates. The first time it's in Nacella is in twelve of twenty-one. The grand opening was last week. It was, it is completely full, one hundred percent occupancy because it's fifty to eighty percent, okay? But I have a big, huge, huge issue with the fact that the Rome Yard was approved in 2021. And I went out there this morning, and I just want to show you all this because I stopped this morning because I, you know, I'm not from Tampa. I wish I could, I would love to be able to say what these folks say and I've lived here all my life, but I'm not, okay? So this is me stopping by the Rome Yard this morning. I think this is probably where the Yellow Jackets play. And, and again, here we go this morning. Okay, and this morning. Okay, so according to my little timeline here, next month will be four years since the RFP was given to Related Group. Why does it look like a dirt field? Why do we not have timelines assigned to our, our RFPs? If we are giving away our property to developers to develop for us, if we are going into contracts, why is there not a timeline? Every single project should have a timeline. Four years later, these folks still have dirt. Nine hundred and fifty-four units are supposed to be built here. And you know, it's funny because just yesterday or the day before, somebody asked me, "Why do you think it's drug-ons for so long?" Well, I've got some hypothesis. For starters, we got this wonderful little riverwalk that's gonna run right next to it. Do you think that changes the value of the property? You betcha. It sure does. So we could talk about all the money we're gonna spend on that riverwalk. But I, what I thought was really interesting was when I was looking for more information, of course, I have to dig around a little bit. But the Rome Yard's website is non-existent anymore. If you Google the Rome Yard, it goes to a dead page. So Related Group doesn't even care enough about this project to pay the, for the website to still be up and running?
Thank you very much.
Oh, thank you. Y'all have a good day.
All right, our next speaker is Cheryl, Charlene Levy. Am I saying it correctly, ma'am?
Good morning, everyone.
Please state your name.
My name is Charlene Levy, and I would like to say regarding the Fair Oaks Park, I'm from Hyde Park, but my family is right there on Wilder and Thirty Fourth. So Fair Oaks was my park. I owned a semi-pro football team. It had a little league football team. I needed somewhere to play. Artis Gambrell opened up many doors and parks in the city for us to have games. Fair Oaks started out as the Bears, the Bandits, the Rattlers, and the Wildcats. But at the end of the day, you have to realize, not only did he help the children, he helped adults. And I see a few of the workers here from the city that he actually gave opportunities to. As far as the kids, we know our kids need a park to go to and Artis made sure he hired the right employees to work with our children. And like the gentleman say, Artis will discipline the kids there along with the staff. When they got home, they got disciplined as well because I was one of them, because I was a bad little girl. And I know they got me real good, but look at me today and I appreciate that. But at the end of the day, if we can please keep the name either Fair Oaks, because everyone know Fair Oaks, Artis Gambrell, let's, let's give respect where respect is due. This man have done a lot in this community, not just for us. And as Marvin Knight say, he didn't only spend money of his own, he spent his own personal money along with the city money as well. So can we just like be fair about it? I mean, let's give us, give our park what it really should be named, and that's Artis Gambrell Senior. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you very much. Mr. Steve Michelini, Sandra Pardue, and Eileen Henderson. No, Sandra Pardue, followed by Eileen Henderson and Ms. Angela Alderman-Win. Yes, ma'am, please state your name.
Good morning, Sandra Pardue. Good morning, council members, city employees, and citizens. I'm in front of you today to thank you for all that you've done to keep our parks growing, improving, and thriving. We're lucky that Tampa has the foresight and the ability to support what's so necessary for our citizens. I do have some observations, questions, and concerns relating to the park I enjoy each day. That's Curtis Hickson Park. I look forward each day to going over there and I look forward to the opportunities others have to go over there too and experience it. But it's suffering. So some of my observations, we show it a lot of love, almost too much sometimes. Pavers jutting up from the large vehicular traffic when we have festivals, stains on the pavers and in the grass from the fluids that the vehicles put out. Grass turned to sand and mud, real quickly. Cigarette butts from smoking as certain people occupy parts of the park pretty much all day. The unhoused folks over there, cigarette butts everywhere and smoke. Unregulated high-decibel sounds from the many festivals that we have. Rattling the windows and perhaps damaging the hearing of those who are not even at the festival, but just close enough to experience it, you know, six hundred yards away, your windows rattle. So some questions for you that I'd like you to consider as you go forward trying to manage our city. Are the festival users paying their fair share for the wear and tear they put on the park? I don't know. Parks and Rec might know. You might know. Do we need more daily checks in the park for those who are not observing the rules about smoking and littering? Litter is more than cigarette butts. Some of the folks that use the park every day leave their belongings lying around in the park, stacked somewhere under a bench or in the bushes. You know, New Orleans had some coolers on their street that weren't appropriate. I'm concerned that if you allow that to continue, that's an opportunity for someone to do some damage and some mischief, you know, taking advantage of a situation. We have noise ordinances in our city. Do they cover what happens in the parks? I referred to the rattling windows before. If we do have them, are they being monitored? And if they're being monitored, who's responsible for doing that monitoring? Hearing damage and property damage are the things I'm concerned about there. And I'm pretty sure if you check the calls to the non-emergency number last weekend for the festival that was there, there'll be several from the neighbors, maybe more than several. So thank you for keeping our park system as it is and continuing to improve it. Curtis Hickson is a gem. It's a diamond right now. But if we're not careful with benign neglect of some of these issues as it ages, it won't be a diamond anymore. It'll become some kind of scratched circuit, what do you call those things? Cubic zirconiums. So let's not let the wear and tear accumulate to the point where the over-usage just gives us something impossible to deal with. Thank you for hearing my thoughts. Hope you'll work closely with our great Parks and Rec folks. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Ms. Eileen Henderson, Mrs. Angela Alderman-Win, and Mr. Ulrich Johnson. Yes, ma'am. Please state your name.
Eileen Henderson, the Cemetery Society. Good morning, council.
Good morning.
I'm glad to be back. I know it's been a while since you've seen me, and I'm coming back full force. I'd like to start with recognizing Black History Month for all of those that are celebrating. Sad that we have to celebrate just for a month because it should be not every day of the year. I do want to mention item number seventy. I was here when you all voted to finally move forward with the funding, and it was a great day indeed. There's been a lot of controversy about this name. As a fifth generation of Tampa, I know it is Fair Oaks. I fight for history and history's important. When we start looking at changing names, I understand development has to take place, but we always want to make sure we temper that with our history. I would strongly suggest we go back to the drawing board for the name and reconsider how we can follow that process. I didn't realize there was a new process, but we really should be following the process. Moving forward, I wanted to present to you today the projects for 2025 with the Cemetery Society in hopes that you can be proactive and I don't have to get out there in the streets and protest and do everything that I do and get with media to make sure we get the changes that we need for our historic cemeteries. Number one, College Hill, where's the letter to the state? I'd like a follow-up. And the GPR. I want the Italian Club to hear me clear and loud. I'm coming for you. You're gonna give us the GPR and you're gonna do the right thing, and that's final. Marty Cologne, the City of Tampa needs to purchase that property, period. We won the battle. The folks didn't move forward. There are bodies buried there. We've got the proof. Let's do the right thing. Memorial Park Cemetery, where are we with the veterans monument? Location, restoration, and size. Oak Lawn Cemetery, the fence topper, I need an update. The unhoused, I was just there recently at night. The trash is still despicable and it's on top of the cemetery. There are people sleeping along the walls. We've got to figure out a decades-long problem. It's a historic cemetery. And now there's a damaged fence. Wood Lawn has a damaged fence along the old Central Asturiano. And Markers. Markers is something I brought to the table when I started the Cemetery Society. I was sort of shot down. We have new blood with our cemetery coordinator in the Parks Department. She is phenomenal. I cannot say enough good things about Lindsey is her name. She works with us. There's open communication. It's better than anything I've ever had. So kudos to her, and I want you all to know that and recognize that. I don't have anything more to say. I just want you to know I'm gonna be sending this project's report to you and hopefully we can work and be proactive to get these items done. Thank you, council. We appreciate everything you do.
Thank you very much. Mrs. Angela Alderman-Win, Mr. Ulrich Johnson, and Kathy Francore. Good morning, ma'am. Please state your name.
Good morning, council. Angela Alderman-Win, here to speak in regards to College Hill Cemetery and the Italian Club's continued lack of transparency with scan results. As we are two months into 2025, I come before you today to address the status updates on several items discussed by council last year. One being a letter to be drafted to the state regarding the issue with the Italian Club and College Hill Cemetery. Councilwoman Henderson's office has been very kind with keeping me informed that this is being worked on. I am here today just asking for some new information and details if this letter has taken place. I am also here to check the status on the letter that was to be penned by Councilman Vera's office last year to the Italian Club, due to their lack of transparency with the scan results and ignoring council's many requests to attend to produce the results. I have stood before council for several years now, and now we are going into another year. My heart will remain hopeful that 2025 will bring us the answers we need. I am grateful for what council has done and been able to do thus far. I am asking council to please continue to support my efforts with closure and answers to where the twelve hundred lost souls are that rest within the boundaries of what is now the Italian Club Cemetery. I will not go away silently. I will not let this be brushed aside and forgotten again as the Italian Club would like. I will never abandon this issue. However, I will continue to fight for what is right and give restoration and dignity back to those who were desecrated at College Hill Cemetery. I will continue to bring to light the truth and help the community heal and yet from yet another desecrated and forgotten cemetery within our community. I may be one person standing before you all today, but I have twelve hundred alongside me waiting for their healing and memory to be restored. Thank you, city council.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you very much. Ulrich Johnson, is the gentleman here? Okay, Kathy Francore, Shonta Davis, I believe, Mentesna, and Ms. Connie Burton. And that would conclude our public comment.
Hello.
Good morning, ma'am. Please state your name.
Kathy Francore. I live on Westland, one street in from Howard. So I just wanted to give some feedback on that stretch where they put the new parking spots on Howard. I have already almost avoided an accident having to slam on my brakes because somebody was pulling out onto Howard from the west side of De Leon. When those parking spots are full, you can't see coming out onto Howard. It's just, you only have a few feet because all the cars are there. You can't see what's coming. So they darted out in front of me. So I don't know who actually made the decision to put those parking spots there because I don't really think they know what goes on after eleven PM, from eleven to three. Now you have those parked cars there. You're gonna have these kids, most of them are drunk, darting across Howard, trying to get to their parked cars. They don't use the crosswalks, and I have a picture here. You have all this traffic coming north on Howard, people just darting across. And, you know, you have Uber, or excuse me, the Uber and Lyft drivers dropping people off. And add to that, you know, these people trying to parallel park on the street. It's just too much. Speaking of the Uber drivers, I understand they're planning a designated drop-off zone. I'm not exactly sure where they're planning this. I'm trying to find that out. We are a residential neighborhood and obviously you guys already know, we already have enough rude, inconsiderate drunk people just going through our neighborhood on foot. So whoever decides this, I hope they think long and hard where they plan on putting that because I can guarantee you no resident wants that near their house. Lastly, on Friday and Saturday nights, the police block off our neighborhood side streets to keep the flow of traffic going on Howard. And what that does is it brings all that traffic from Howard onto our residential street, mostly on Westland. So that whole redirection of traffic the police are doing is just, it's a nonstop increase of traffic into Westland. And not only that, my neighbor had his car sideswiped because we were parked on the residential street and all this traffic was coming through. But lastly, there's, I've requested that these barricades, the police use these on Friday and Saturday night. They sit here all week long, for almost a year now, and nobody picks them up during the week. They get trashed and I'm just trying to find out who... week. They get trashed, and I'm just trying to find out who can remove those during the week.
Thank you very much.
So thank you.
Mr. Chief of Staff, are you taking, he's taking notes right there. So thank you very much, ma'am. I apologize. I have an extra speaker. Robin Lockett will be the last speaker. The card was in the box. Shanta, is Shanta here? All right. Mentesna, Ms. Connie Burton, Ms. Robin Lockett. I'm sorry?
Yeah, he passed. Good morning, sir. Please state your name.
Ahuru Mentesna. When I say ahuru means freedom in Swahili, Mentesna means anything's possible. One thing I can say, black people bored as F. Black people bored as F. Y'all down here talking about naming a MF in park, and we have so many problems inside our communities. That's ignorant. It's straight ignorant. It's as ignorant as me. Advertise it. You understand? It's a lot of black people did a lot of good in this community. You understand? And y'all making fuss over naming a MF in park, as ignorant as you possibly can be. Donald Trump just took office, and black people talking about naming a park. The white people over there worried about what, how they gonna run stuff through Hyde Park, and y'all talking about naming a park. You know, Coach Barnes, Papa Green, Artist Gambrell, Coach Wright, Gay Papa Miles. Nobody talks about Gay Papa Miles. Nobody talks about Big Johns from Big Johns Alabama Barbecue. Fed a lot of people. Free. Mr. Baxley's. Lady over here in Central Park, I couldn't even think, I drew a blank trying to think of her name. Did so much to hold the hood down. Lots of people. Name the park the Kwame and Kruma Park. Name it the Maurice Bishop Park, the Malcolm X Park. Name it something so black people can look up to. It's a black man been in the park for years, decades, tinted windows. Name it after him. Nobody said nothing about him, you know? But anyway, we're not going to talk about that, because I'm not going to talk about anything silly. What I'm going to talk about is child support. I'm going to talk about child support. Child support is the biggest problem inside the black community for the last 50 years. Creates more havoc inside the black community. I don't care if you think a few women getting checks. It's a eugenics program. And it's illegal. It's unconstitutional. The white folks know it. The judges know it. The hearing officers know it. The magistrates know it. The Supreme Court of Florida know it. The United States Supreme Court know it. They all know it. But it's like slavery. They knew it for hundreds of years. And the MF has let it go on. Even the Dred Scott decision, they reaffirmed it. And that's what they doing with child support. It's a human ownership, human trafficking program. This the child support application. You see the first question in the child support application? The first entry in the child support application is, "I have a fear of physical, emotional harm from the other parent." The application is totally leading and totally misleading and totally illegal and unconstitutional. And this city council got to do something about it because it's ruining too many black families, too many black men, old black men walking around here with no driver's license. Old elderly black men. It's time to stop it. Child support.
Thank you very much, sir. Ms. Connie Burton, and our last speaker is Ms. Robin Lockett.
Good morning, Connie Burton. Black history, 365 days out of the year. This month, though, is the month that should prick the consciousness of those that live in the United States that can give testimony to the fact that black people that was enslaved and built this country to the level of comfort that it is right now, black people still don't enjoy it. Why would we have to come as you redevelop inside of our community? Beg, plead, hope that we prick your consciousness to listen to the cries of the people. Parks that we recognize that has been a staple holder to our community should remain as such. As this city continue to gentify, it cannot become the beloved city that you identified in Resolution 344. When the officer of the month is being recognized, I often look and say, what black institution can participate in that process? None. You know why? They have all been destroyed. They have all gone away. Things that fed us, closed us, gave us more encouragement, those institutions have gone. And then when people say, well, you could do it yourself, I'm here every week to see how this mayor, this city government lends $12 million loans to institutions so they can project their projects. This morning, I want you to recognize that for over 115 years, we've had a solid institution inside of the black community called NAACP. Some find it to be disgusting to them because it againstpricked to the consciousness of making sure that black people, black people can be given a semblance of equality and justice. And as most white people watch your national leadership get ready to run this whole country off the rail, you remain silent. We don't plan on remaining silent. We plan on continuing, as we just seen two weeks ago, the vote, the installation of new officers at the NAACP, that we say even to this city government, that refuse to recognize that leadership, we gonna keep on moving forward. We also recognize, too, that if you're to become a beloved city like your Resolution 344 layout you want to become, that you listen to the community, that you listen to the people, that we're not going to wait until the end of that board, that body, to come back and tell you what you're doing wrong. Each week, it is our responsibility to inform the community of things that you're not doing. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our last speaker is Ms. Robin Lockett. Good morning, ma'am. Please state your name.
Good morning, Council. Robin Lockett. I just want to go over a couple things. Things I appreciate first. I appreciate the way that the agenda is being created, and also the outcome of the agenda with the minutes and the dates that you guys decide of next things coming up. I appreciate that, right? Because that gives, that allows the community, if they are looking at the agenda, what action items have happened, and they can look forward to the next date. What I would suggest is that this should be everything. You guys should not make a motion and not have a, and the motion is approved for something else to come up, and not have a date tag to it. There should be a date tag to all your stuff so you will know, it won't get lost in the fray. It'll have to come back up. So that's just a suggestion. Fair Oaks. I think, as everybody says, I didn't grow up on, off of 34th, 34th. I grew up on the other east, on the other side of East Tampa. But I think that it is dutiful of the council to listen to the community and come up with a name. Let it be fair, a lot of people came out saying Fair Oaks was the name, Artist Gambrell was the name. But please do due process on it. Councilman, former Councilman Orlando Goose texted me, and he states that you guys received a letter from him. He would like for you to read that letter. That was his request. He wanted me to ask. But what is on my agenda? Yeah, that was it. So, yeah, so Fair Oaks should be, you should listen to the community by any means necessary. If it's coming out, advertise it well. Don't advertise it in secret, and then nobody shows up and you say nobody came out. So advertise it well. Do your due diligence on advertising it well, and bring the community. So as of that day, like somebody had indicated, as of that day, it's decided, and everybody, the community can move on. Thank you for your time.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you very much. That concludes public comment. Any requests by the public for reconsideration of legislative matters? All right, we're going to go into our consent agenda. Public safety is Councilmember.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
We did the agenda review earlier today, and we kind of bypassed this item on Fair Oaks 70. I would suggest we just strike this from further agenda, from our agenda from now until it's readdressed. So remove item 70.
I would like to, I would like to read Councilman Goose's memo and have a discussion about it when it comes.
Just wait for that. Okay, that's fine.
All right. You want to do it now, or you want to wait till then? Councilmember Carlson?
Just wait till the agenda.
Okay, all right. Let's go into consent agenda then. Councilmember Vera, it's your items from five through seven.
Yes, sir. Move five through seven.
We have a motion from Councilmember Vera. Second, Councilmember Miranda. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Councilmember Henderson, eight through 17 is your committee.
Thank you so much, Chair. Yes, I move Community and Neighborhood Affairs, Items Agenda.
All right, eight through 17.
What's the number?
Eight through 17.
Eight through 17. Thank you. I dropped my notes.
Yes, ma'am. We have a motion from Councilmember Henderson, second from Councilmember Vera. All in favor? Aye. I'm sorry?
Aye.
Oh, I'm sorry. We need to do roll call because she's virtual. So we have a motion and a second. Roll call, vote, please.
For every single thing?
Every time, if it involves, if it involves her vote. Yeah, but this is.
Unanimous consent.
For eight through seven, we can take it as a group, right?
Yes.
Pardon?
Just the ordinances.
Just the ordinances?
Yeah.
Yeah. All right. So let's do a roll call vote for eight through 17.
I don't think we need to.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed?
Aye.
Legally sufficient?
We just did it for all those other ones, like.
Okay, well, let's do it for the consent docket, and I'll, let me think it through. All right.
Unanimous consent.
Unanimous consent. Thank you very much. All right.
Yes, I move items 18 through 21 and 23 through 34.
By unanimous consent.
By unanimous consent.
We have a motion, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Councilmember Miranda.
Thank you, Chairman. Page 35 through 38.
We have a motion from Councilmember Miranda. Do we have a second? Second, Councilmember Vera. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Items 40 through 44. Councilmember Carlson?
Yes, sir. And I need to abstain on item 43. My firm does not do business related to any city projects, including this one. However, we have a client that may benefit from this, and so I want to make a motion and receive and file my Form 8B.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All in favor? Aye? Any opposed?
I'd like to move items 40 through 42 and then 44.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All in favor? Aye. Councilmember Clendenon?
I move item 45.
No, 43. It's a separate vote. We have a motion from Councilmember Clendenon. Second, Councilmember Miranda. All in favor? Aye.
Motion carried. We have Carlson abstaining.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item 45 is Councilmember Clendenon. You were the vice chair of the previous one. That's why I pulled it. Go ahead, sir.
I move item 45.
All right, we have a motion from Councilmember Clendenon. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second, Councilmember Vera. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All right, we have an item being set for a public, several public hearings for March 6, 10:30 a.m., March 27, 10:30 a.m., at 3:15 East Kennedy Boulevard, Third Floor, Tampa, 33602. We have a motion from Councilmember Clendenon, second from Councilmember Miranda. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, we are at 10:30. We can, yes?
I'm sorry, the items on the staff reports?
Oh, yeah. Let me see, because there were requests for in-person for some of them. So, wait, wait, wait. I don't want to make any mistakes. So 60 and 64, it was requested. I know, but it was requested that they appear in person. Thank you very much.
61, 62, 63, and 64.
Okay.
I move items 61, 62, 63, 65, and 66, and 69. Oh, no, we already did that. Sorry.
65 and then 66. We have a motion from Councilmember Hurtak. We have a second from Councilmember Vera. Roll call vote on this one.
Vera, Miranda, Carlson.
Yes.
Hurtak.
Yes.
Clendenon.
Yes.
Henderson.
Yes.
And Maniscalco.
Yes.
Motion carried unanimously.
All right. Can I get a motion to open the public hearings of 10 o'clock? We have a motion from Councilmember Clendenon, second from Councilmember Miranda. All in favor? Aye? Any opposed? All right, the items 47 and 48 are non-quasi-judicial, so we don't have to swear anybody in. All right, we have a brief update from the Purchasing Director on item number 47. If she is here, yes, ma'am, come on up.
Good morning, Council. Thank you very much. Deanna Fager, Director of Purchasing. We are here for the second reading of the threshold increase. I'm here to answer any questions. This is basically to bring us up to date. We haven't had an update to the threshold in about 25 years, so this would be greatly appreciated by staff as far as reducing workload a little bit and kind of balancing things out. So I'm just here to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions, Councilmember Carlson?
Yeah, I just wanted to remind everyone that six months ago or so, I met with staff and Chief of Staff about a whole series of new guidelines for purchasing, like three bid minimum and ways to do piggybacking, et cetera, and purchasing. And Chief of Staff agreed to all those, and we've approved all of them. And now we've got some great policies, and City Council approved them also. The issue at the time was that Chief of Staff in Purchasing said, all that is going to take additional time, and other jurisdictions have raised the minimum threshold. And so in balancing those, I think it was worth the trade-off to get those additional safeguards in place. So I'm voting for the.
Thank you very much. Anything else? If not, is there anybody in the public that wishes to speak on 47?
Motion closed.
Wait. Okay. Wait. Okay. She's coming up. We have a speaker, so. Yes, ma'am. Please state your name.
Stephanie Porter. It seems that this is, this is actually addressing some of the issues that we have in the city where we kind of stagnate ourselves and we don't move forward because we don't take into account inflation, CPI, that kind of stuff. This particular thing, I think it's a great idea, but I want to make sure that we are raising our fees, that the citizens of Tampa are offsetting along with the impacts of these changes. So I just want to make sure that we don't forget about the fees that the citizens are offsetting should be adjusted for CPI and whatnot as well. I think that it's probably time to make this increase. Thank you.
Councilmember Hurtak.
Thank you. I wanted to talk to Ms. Fager about one thing that we talked about during our prep meeting of, right now, we have a limit of 100,000. But if something were to be at 95,000 to 100,000, you create a memo for Council. Can you speak to what your plan is for this raising up to the 200,000?
Yes. Thank you, Councilwoman. So currently, as Councilwoman Hurtak mentioned, if we are making a purchase that is between 95 and 100,000 dollars, that is exempt from Council approval, we still provide reporting, 50,000 to 100,000. But from 95 to 100,000, we require that the department heads provide a memo explaining the pricing, why we're in that. Just because it's kind of skirting the threshold, we want to make sure that it is clear that this is not an attempt to, you know, skirt City Council approval. So we do have them write a justification memo, and we submit that with our reports every quarter. The intent now, if you all approve this change, is that we will now require a memo from 190,000 to 200,000.
Thank you. I just wanted to make sure folks knew that.
We have a motion close from Councilmember Clendenon. Second, Councilmember Vera. All in favor?
Aye.
Councilmember Miranda, would you mind reading 47?
47. Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. Thank you. Item number 47, file number E2024/8, Chapter 2. Orders being presented for second reading and adoption, an ordinance of the city of Tampa regarding bidding and certain contracts amending Sections 2, 276, City of Tampa Code, to exempt from City Council approval all purchases requiring an expenditure of less than 200,000, amending Section 2/277, City of Tampa Code, to authorize the Director of Purchasing to administer public improvement contract estimated to cost less than 200,000, providing for severability, repeating all ordinance conflict herewith, providing for effective date.
We have a motion and a second. Roll call vote. Yes, ma'am.
I just want to make sure that dollars is in there, because that was skipped both times. times, two-hundred thousand dollars.
And no euros, no yen, dollars?
No.
Okay.
Hurtak?
Yes.
Clendenon?
Yes.
Henderson?
Yes.
Viera?
Yes.
Miranda?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
And Maniscalco?
Yes.
We have, I'm sorry. Motion carried unanimously.
Thank you. Were you going to say?
Thank you very much.
Physical quorum? All right, item number forty-eight. I think this goes right with the, yes, sir. Please state your name.
Good morning, Richard Matterback, Director of Contract Administration, here to answer any questions on item forty.
Any questions for the gentleman? Nope. Anybody in the public wishes to speak on forty-eight?
Motion closed.
We have motion closed from Councilmember Miranda, second from Councilmember Clendenon, all in favor? Aye. Councilmember Viera, would you mind reading forty-eight?
Sure, Mr. Chairman, I move ordinance being presented for second reading, adoption, ordinance of the City of Tampa, Florida, amending City of Tampa Code, Chapter Two, Article Five, Division Three, Purchases and Contracts, Section Two dash two-eighty, requiring that work orders may not be issued to a single provider of professional services exceeding two-hundred thousand in the aggregate per fiscal year without council approval, and increasing the threshold amount for City Council approval of work from one-hundred thousand to two-hundred thousand dollars, providing for appeal of all ordinances and conflict, providing for severability, providing for an effective date.
We have a motion and a second from Councilmember Clendenon, roll call vote?
Clendenon?
Yes.
Henderson? Henderson?
Councilmember Henderson? She's muted.
Yes, I'm sorry, I'm here. Can you repeat that, Chair?
Yes, it was a, we're doing a roll call vote for item forty-eight, and we were just going down the line.
Yes, I, I'm sorry, my eight was in my ear.
No.
I apologize, yes.
You're okay, don't worry. Yes, ma'am.
Do I need to?
No.
Viera?
Um, yes.
Miranda?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Hurtak?
Yes.
And Maniscalco?
Yes.
Motion carried unanimously.
All right. We have our quasi-judicial public hearings, we have a few people registered. I see Alvaro Rodriguez and Randy Cohen, I don't know if they're on right now, but if they are, we're going to have to raise their right hand and we'll swear them in. So if you're going to speak on items forty-nine through fifty-five, please stand, raise your right hand, and we'll swear you in, forty-nine through fifty-five. All right, item number forty-nine.
Good morning, Stephanie Pope, Development Coordination. Item number forty-nine is REZ twenty-three-seventy-one. This item is a rezoning request for the property located at fifty-one oh-six East Twenty-first Avenue. The request is to rezone from PD and RM sixteen to commercial industrial. I'm available if you have any questions.
Any questions? All right, do we have an applicant for item number forty-nine? Come on up.
Good morning, Members of Council, Brian Sykes, forty-nine twenty-three, West Cypress Street, Tampa, Florida, three-three-six-oh-seven. Nothing further to add from our prior hearing, appreciate council's consideration.
Is there anybody in the public that wishes to speak on forty-nine?
Motion closed.
Second.
I see no one, okay, Councilmember Clendenon with the motion to close, second from Councilmember Miranda, all in favor? Aye. Councilmember Clendenon, would you like to read forty-nine?
Sure. I move an ordinance being presented for second reading and adoption, an ordinance rezoning property in the general vicinity of five-one oh-six East Twenty-first Avenue in the City of Tampa, Florida, more particularly described in Section One, from zoning districts classifications, PD Plan Development, and RM sixteen residential multifamily to CI Commercial Intensive, providing an effective date.
We have a motion from Councilmember Clendenon, second from Councilmember Viera, roll call vote, please.
Henderson?
Yes.
Thank you. Viera?
Yes.
Miranda?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Hurtak?
Yes.
Clendenon?
Yes.
And Maniscalco?
Yes.
Motion carried unanimously.
Thank you, and Councilmember Henderson accidentally skipped over you, so item fifty, I'm going to ask that you read it if you're okay with it. All right, item number fifty.
Oh, it's, it's, it's okay, Chair, you know, I don't know if it sounds better just coming from inside the chamber, I'm okay with foregoing, you know, my turn in reading.
Okay.
Anything.
Yes, ma'am, thank you very much.
It's okay, thank you.
All right, item number fifty, is there an applicant here?
Good morning, St. Thomas Development Coordination. Item number fifty is REZ twenty-four sixty-one. The item is a request to rezone the property located at thirty-seven oh-four and thirty-seven oh-six East Dr. Martin Luther King Junior Boulevard. The request is to rezone from residential single-family fifty and commercial intensive to plan development for congregate living facility, large group care facility. Revisions have been completed and certified plans have been submitted to the clerk's office, I'm available if there are any questions.
Any questions? All right, I saw that we have a registered applicant, Alvaro Rodriguez, is Alvaro on? Okay, all right, is there anybody in the public that wishes to speak on item fifty? Yes, ma'am, come on up. Please state your name.
Yes, sir, good morning, Connie Burton. We recognize that a lot of things is coming toward East Tampa, and so if there was a public hearing about this, many of the residents are not aware. And so I would just like to encourage people that is coming into the community and want to act as good neighbors, good stewards, that they do their due diligence to ensure that the community is aware, because now we are spectators. I read and I understand what is written and what it's been to be, but, you know, it's their property, it's their lot, they could come in and be, again, good neighbors of being seen as villains to the community, just because we're not having enough engagement and conversation as people now come and dump inside of East Tampa. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anybody else that wishes to speak on fifty?
Second.
We have a motion to close from Councilmember Clendenon, second from Councilmember Miranda, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? All right, Councilmember Hurtak, would you mind reading fifty?
File number REZ twenty-four dash sixty-one, ordinance being presented for second reading and adoption, an ordinance rezoning the property in the general vicinity of thirty-seven oh-four and thirty-seven oh-six East Dr. Martin Luther King Junior Boulevard in the City of Tampa, Florida, and more particularly described in Section One, from zoning district classifications, RS fifty residential single-family and CI Commercial Intensive, to PD Plan Development, Congregate Living Facility, Large Group Care Facility, providing an effective date.
We have a motion from Councilmember Hurtak, second from Councilmember Viera, roll call, please.
Miranda?
Yes.
After. Viera?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Hurtak?
Yes.
Clendenon?
Yes.
Henderson?
Yes.
And Maniscalco?
Yes.
Motion carried unanimously.
Send, move the resolution.
All right, we have a motion to move the resolution from Councilmember Clendenon, second from Councilmember Miranda, or no, Viera. Miranda, I'm sorry. Roll call, vote.
Viera?
Yes.
Miranda?
Yes.
Carlson? Hurtak?
Yes.
Clendenon?
Yes.
Henderson?
Yes.
And Maniscalco?
Yes.
Motion carried unanimously.
Thank you very much. All right, item number fifty-one.
Stephanie Pope, Development Coordination. Item number fifty-one is REZ twenty-four seventy-nine. This item is a rezoning request for the property located at two-twenty-three South Howard Avenue. The request is to rezone from Commercial General to Plan Development for all Commercial General uses. Revisions have been completed and certified plans have been submitted to the clerk's office. I'm available if you have any questions.
Any questions? Yes, sir.
Steve McElhenney, I'm here representing the petitioner, I'd be happy to answer any questions, I appreciate your approval.
Any questions for the petitioner? Nope, all right, is there anybody in the public that wishes to speak on item number fifty-one? We have a motion to close from Councilmember Clendenon, second from Councilmember Miranda, all in favor? Aye. Councilmember Carlson, would you mind reading fifty-one?
I move item number fifty-one, file number REZ twenty-four dash seventy-nine, ordinance being presented for second reading and adoption, an ordinance rezoning property in the general vicinity of two-two-three South Howard Avenue in the City of Tampa, Florida, and more particularly described in Section One, from zoning district classification CG Commercial General to PD Plan Development, all Commercial General uses, providing effective date.
We have a motion from Councilmember Carlson, second from Councilmember Clendenon, roll call vote.
Henderson?
Yes.
Viera?
Yes.
Hurtak?
Yes.
Clendenon?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Miranda?
Yes.
And Maniscalco?
Yes.
Motion carried unanimously.
Thank you, item number fifty-two.
Thank you, Council.
Yes, sir, thank you very much, fifty-two?
Good morning, Christopher Demont, Development Coordination. Item number fifty-two is REZ twenty-four ninety-two. This item is a rezoning request for the property located at four-zero-one-five East Eleventh Avenue. The request is to rezone from RM sixteen to CI Commercial Intensive. This is a Euclid rezoning request, there's no site plan associated with the request. This is before you today for the second reading, I'm available if you have any questions.
Any questions for the gentleman? All right, is there an applicant for item number fifty-two? Item fifty-two has no applicant here or online, is there anybody in the public that wishes to speak on fifty-two? Wait, are you the applicant, sir?
Sal, good morning, Council. Sal Ruardo, Senior, five-eight oh-seven Mariner Street, Tampa, three-three-six-oh-nine. I'm here to represent the property at four-zero-one-five East Eleventh Avenue, if there's any questions.
Any questions for the gentleman? Anybody in the public wishes to speak on fifty-two?
Motion closed.
We have a motion to close from Councilmember Clendenon, do we have a second?
Second.
Second, Councilmember Viera, all in favor? Aye. Councilmember Miranda, we left off with you at fifty-two?
Fifty-two.
Yes, sir.
File number REZ twenty-four dash ninety-two, order being presented for second reading and adoption, an ordinance rezoning property in general vicinity of forty-fifth and East Eleventh Avenue in the City of Tampa, Florida, and more particularly described in Section One, from zoning district classification RM sixteen residential multifamily to CI one Commercial Intensive uses, providing an effective date.
We have a motion from Councilmember Miranda, second from Councilmember Clendenon, roll call.
Carlson?
Yes.
Hurtak?
Yes.
Clendenon?
Yes.
Henderson? Henderson?
Yes.
Viera?
Yes.
Miranda?
Yes.
And Maniscalco?
Yes.
Motion carried unanimously.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Council.
Item number fifty-three.
Stephanie Pope, Development Coordination. Item number fifty-three is REZ twenty-four ninety-five. This item is a rezoning request for the property located at twenty-five oh-eight North Fifty-eighth Street. The request is to rezone from RM sixteen to Industrial General. I'm available if you have any questions.
Any questions? Nope, we have an applicant for fifty-three, yes, ma'am, come on up. Oh. Welcome back, please state your name.
Eileen Rosario, ARPC, fifty-eight twenty-seven East Columbus Drive, Tampa, Florida. I'm here to be having any questions, and thank you for your approval.
All right, any questions for the applicant? Do you have anybody in the public that wishes to speak on fifty-three? We have a motion to close from Councilmember Clendenon, second from Councilmember Miranda, all in favor? Aye. Aye. Councilmember Viera?
Yes, and my pleasure to read this for Ms. Rosario. Ordinance being presented for second reading and adoption, an ordinance rezoning property in the general vicinity of two-five oh-eight North Fifty-eighth Street in the City of Tampa, Florida, more particularly described in Section One, from zoning district classification RM sixteen residential multifamily to IG Industrial General uses, providing an effective date.
We have a motion from Councilmember Viera, second from Councilmember Clendenon, roll call vote.
Hurtak?
Yes.
Clendenon?
Yes.
Henderson?
Yes.
Viera?
Yes.
Miranda?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
And Maniscalco?
Yes.
Motion carried unanimously.
All right, item number fifty-four.
Stephanie Pope, Development Coordination. Item number fifty-four is REZ twenty-four ninety-eight. This item is a rezoning request for the property located at seventeen oh-nine East Henry Avenue. The request is to rezone from Seminole Heights residential single-family to Seminole Heights Plan Development. Revisions have been completed and certified plans have been submitted to the clerk's office. I'm available for any questions.
Any questions? Is there an applicant for item number fifty-four? See you later. Item fifty-four? Has no applicant. We have, we have anybody in the public that wishes to speak on fifty-four? I see no one. Motion to close from Councilmember Clendenon, do we have a second? Second from Councilmember Miranda, all in favor? Aye. Councilmember Clendenon, fifty-four? Wait, Councilmember Viera, were you able to see the record?
Yeah, and I always, I mean, whenever, yeah, I mean, just in the normal review of the file, et cetera.
Okay.
I'll tell Marty Shelby, are you ready to vote on this?
Ready and willing.
Ready and willing.
All right, Councilmember Clendenon, fifty-four?
I move file number REZ twenty-four ninety-eight, an ordinance being presented for second reading and adoption, an ordinance rezoning property in the general vicinity of seventeen oh-nine East Henry Avenue in the City of Tampa, Florida, more particularly described in Section One, from zoning districts classifications SHRS Seminole Heights residential single-family to SHPD Seminole Heights Plan Development residential single-family detached, providing an effective date.
We have a motion from Councilmember Clendenon, second from Councilmember Miranda, roll call vote.
Viera?
Yes.
Clendenon?
Yes.
Henderson.
Yes.
Miranda.
Yes.
Carlson. Hertak.
Yes.
Amanda Skako.
Yes.
Motion carried unanimously with Carlson being absent at vote.
All right. Mr. Gardner, do you have fifty-five?
Yes.
Okay, you came in after we swore people in, so after, yeah. If you've come in since for this last item and you're going to speak on it, please stand and raise your right hand. We'll swear you in.
Please swear our terms of defense and literature about the provided, if there's nothing but the truth.
And is Mr. Cohen online or no?
He is.
He is? Okay. If he's going to speak, we need to swear a minute. Not, all right. Mr. Thomas, go ahead, sir.
St. Thomas, Development Coordination. Item number fifty-five is REZ twenty-four one twelve, eleven, or REZ twenty-four eleven twelve. This item is a rezoning request for the property located at five oh nine South Hyde Park Avenue. The request is to rezone from Plan Development to Plan Development for office business professional and office medical. Revisions have been completed and certified plans have been submitted to the clerk's office. I'm available if there are any questions.
All right. Any questions for Mr. Thomas? Mr. Gardner, come on up, sir. Please state your name.
Good morning. True Gardner, four hundred North Ashley Drive, here on behalf of Tampa General Hospital. We had unanimous approval at first reading, but Councilman Carlson directed us to go back out one last time, I believe, specifically to Spanish Town Creek and just wanted to report back that outreach. We had met with Spanish Town Creek actually twice prior to the first reading, but reached back out to them to see if they had any other questions or concerns. Did not hear back from them. Also reached out to, excuse me, but this is going to be alphabet soup, HHPI. I talked to Mary Lou Bailey. She expressed no concerns at all. Reached out to HHPNA, if you will call it the hearing, they had their letter of non-objection. They did not respond back to that. And then lastly, LJ Tunis at TGH met with the nice lady that came before at first reading from the Ponce Townhomes HOA, which is next door, and met with her on site. And they wrote a very nice letter, which I'll submit to the record. We put it in the quasi-box, but I'll submit it to Martin as well. And again, expressing they have no objections either. So just wanted to report back on that outreach since it was requested and here to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions for the applicant? Is there anybody in the public that wishes to speak on fifty-five? All right, I see none. Councilmember Clendenon with the motion closed. Second from Councilmember Miranda, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, item fifty-five. Yes, ma'am. Councilmember Hertak.
File number REZ twenty-four dash one twelve. An ordinance rezoning property in the general vicinity of five oh nine South Hyde Park Avenue in the city of Tampa, Florida, and more particularly described in section one, from zoning district classification PD Plan Development to PD Plan Development Office Business Professional and Medical, providing an effective date.
Second.
We have a motion from Councilmember Hertak, second Councilmember Clendenon, roll call vote.
Henderson.
Yes.
Viera.
Yes.
Miranda.
Yes.
Carlson.
Yes.
Hertak.
Yes.
Clendenon.
Yes.
Amanda Skako.
Yes.
Motion carried unanimously.
Motion to adopt, second reading and adoption.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
All right, the one-thirty public hearings, we have to wait. These are not going to be, there's a request for continuance and a request to withdraw, so we can't take those up until one-thirty. We have item number fifty-eight. We have a memo here with additional information. Is there anybody here to present? Yes, ma'am. Please state your name.
Good morning, Council, Emma Gregory, Legal Department. I'm here for item fifty-eight, which is a proposed ordinance adding pedicabs to our current non-motorized vehicle regulation scheme, which is contained within chapter twenty-five. I'm here for additional details should you need any. So that's what we're here for.
Any questions? All right, is there anybody in the public that wishes to speak on fifty-eight? This is not a quasi-judicial. You don't have to be sworn in for this. All right, I see none. Can I get a motion to close? We have a motion closed from Councilmember Miranda. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second, Councilmember Viero, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Councilmember.
Aye.
Councilmember Carlson, would you like to read fifty-eight?
What'd you say, Ma'am? Morning, Marty. Oh, okay. Move item number fifty-eight, file number E two zero two five dash eight CH twenty-five, ordinance being presented for first reading consideration ordinance of the city of Tampa, Florida, related to pedicab and non-motorized vehicle regulation, making revisions to the City of Tampa Code of Ordinance, chapter twenty-five Transportation, amending section twenty-five dash four, definitions amending section twenty-five dash forty-eight, permit types amending section twenty-five dash sixty, reserved, amending section twenty-five dash sixty-one, no non-motorized vehicle. Permit required, one permit for each business or operation permit to be attached to each vehicle, amending section twenty-five dash sixty-two, same application for permit. Approval, denial of application, appeal, permit fee, amending section twenty-five dash sixty-three, same adherence to plan submitted in application required, amendments to plan, modifications to plan by transportation manager, amending section twenty-five dash sixty-four, same renewal of permits, lost, destroyed permits, permits non-transferable, replacements and substitutes dormant permits, amending section twenty-five dash sixty-five, same drivers permit required, applications, qualifications, issuance or denial of permit, duration and renewal revocation, display of permit, amending section twenty-five dash sixty-six, same business tax, amending section twenty-five dash sixty-seven, same liability insurance required, form, amount and coverage approval, amending and renumbering section twenty-five dash one eight seven to section twenty-five dash sixty, non-motorized vehicles, providing for appeal of all ordinances or parts of ordinance in conflict therewith, providing for cerebrally running effective date.
All right, do we have a second?
Yes.
We have a second from Councilwoman Viera. If there's no further discussion, roll call vote, please.
Carlson.
Yes.
Hertak.
Yes.
Clendenon. Henderson.
Yes.
Viera.
Yes.
Miranda.
Yes.
Amanda Skako.
Yes.
Motion carried unanimously with Clendenon being absent at vote. Second reading and adoption will be held on March sixth, twenty twenty-five, at ten o'clock AM in City Council Chambers three one five, East Kennedy Boulevard, third floor, Tampa, Florida, three three six zero two.
Thank you very much. Yes, ma'am.
I just, my wonderful aide Kelly Scharf. I know we technically have item seventy, but we have a memo that I don't know if anybody had a chance to read that says very clearly that while this particular request has now been reviewed pursuant to the provision of the code process, city staff at the January twenty-third, twenty-twenty-five meeting requested a continuance of this matter to spring twenty twenty-six for the following reason. The property to issue, the East Tampa Recreational Complex, is currently under construction and has generated significant interest in the surrounding community. The continuance was requested for the purpose of providing an opportunity for those community members to provide input as to the naming of the complex and/or facilities therein. The city's community engagement and partnership staff can work with council to help facilitate meetings to solicit community input, enabling council to engage the community before making a final determination. This is from Michelle Van Loon. So it sounds like we've already.
What date was that again?
That was January twenty-third. We apparently, they requested a continuance and it sounds like we granted it. No, we did not grant it.
Ms. Feeley is here. No.
Well, we had a continuance until today. They're asking for another.
No, it said at the January twenty-third meeting, requested a continuance of this matter to spring twenty twenty-six.
Ms. Feeley.
Good morning, counsel. Abby Feeley. We did ask for that and then Councilman Carlson made a motion to bring it back. You guys thought we had a typo in the memo that needed to be February sixth. We asked for February fifth of twenty twenty-six and that's when the motion was made to bring it back today with no further continuances.
Oh, okay.
So that is why a subsequent memo with additional context was provided to kind of clarify that original request for the continuance and the allowance for us to have that public engagement.
All right, we'll get to seventy soon. No, I appreciate it. All right, per Councilmember Viero's request, twenty-two and sixty-seven, we're going to be taken first under staff report, but do you need some, a few more minutes for Chief Trip to come in or?
I, you wanted that first. I don't, I don't know if Chief Trip.
Can we do it after lunch?
The, and I know Mr. Stocko wants to be here. I don't know what his availability is as well. My aide asked you for that.
She asked if we were going to take staff reports before lunch. I mean, we have fifty-eight minutes.
Shelby City Council Attorney. There was a request from your office, I believe, to have it heard first.
Okay.
Under staff reports with item twenty-two and sixty-seven together.
Was that?
But do you need more time?
If you need more time, we can just delay it a bit.
Okay. Um, yeah.
I think that's best.
Did you need more time or?
I mean, if we can get through these other things first and then break for lunch, this is going to be a long conversation.
I, um, okay, I mean, so. Yeah, but we have, I mean, we have an hour.
Yeah, but, but, but yeah, she's not here yet. So why don't we start with sixty and see how we go? Okay.
Okay, so while we await the arrival of Chief Trip, is it all right if we take sixty and just keep it going?
Sure.
And then once she gets in here.
At sixty, I mean, I do, is, that's the package Ms. Feeley will be talking about. Yeah, I do plan on speaking about that in a couple of minutes.
Okay, all right, Ms. Feeley, we're going to take, as we await for Chief Trip, we'll start and just to keep the things going, so item sixty.
Good morning, Abby Feeley, Administrator Development and Economic Opportunity. Item number sixty on your agenda this morning is an agreement between the city and ICF for three point two million dollars. This is the ship money and also some other grant funds that had come in, three million in ship and two hundred and thirteen thousand for us to be able to assist with hurricane recovery. I explained these funds to you earlier, I believe, last month about the ship funds, the three million. There are set-asides within that, thirty percent for fifty percent AMI, thirty percent for eighty percent AMI, and then the remainder could be at the one forty AMI. And I did provide in the memo that is associated with this item, the area median incomes associated with those AMIs, so that you can see what those amounts will be of the residents we can support with these funds. What this does is this gets us into an agreement with ICF so that we can now finalize the aspects of expending these funds and getting them to the residents. So once you sign that today, we already had a call with ICF yesterday to even, to start finalizing the pre-op items and then the finalized application items. So as soon as we have that, I could report back to you on that as well. But we would ask for your consideration of this agreement this morning in order to have these funds be expended by a third party. It's kind of like with our ARPA funds. We did this with Ernst &amp; Young where, because a lot of times we have people call in, they're like, I'm in Tampa, but they're not in the city of Tampa. So we had partnered with the county when we originally did this for COVID, but this is also a way for us to continue on our regular housing programs and have support from this third party. I'm available for any questions.
Councilman Viero, Councilmember Clendenon, thanks.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. And Ms. Feeley, I wanted to thank you for all your hard work. We've worked together on this for some time. And, you know, I really, really do, I, you've worked a lot on this and I really, really appreciate it. I wanted to thank, I didn't ask anybody from North Tampa to come just because I, I, I think the thing speaks for itself. If you've seen the videos or if you've gone out to North Tampa and you've seen what's happened out there to people or seen any of the interviews, whether in the media, things that I've done, et cetera, with people out there. These people are really hurting, but I really wanted to thank, obviously, Bettini, who, you know, she doesn't get paid a dime and she's been working so hard. Miss Self, who came out here, and I've met with her and her husband, who are really, really good people. So I wanted to thank you, Ms. Feeley, and the mayor for the administration for working on this. Because this is something that, you know, we're about a hundred, and Miss Self referred to this, which is we're about a hundred and twenty-five days post Milton. And this is going to radically change the face of North Tampa, a working-class, blue-collar community if we don't intervene liberally. I think this is great. I think we should look at additional funds. I had originally made a motion in October seventeenth, about a week after Milton came to have the city of Tampa look at spending funds for housing and other assistance because I know FEMA certainly does things and we appreciate FEMA, but FEMA is like social security. And like I always say, if you're going to buy a suit, right, FEMA will give you the tie, the belt, maybe the pants, and you got to get the rest. And when you've lost everything in the house and you're a welder or you're a teacher or you're a firefighter and, you know, you've got that hundred and thirty thousand dollar rebuilding cost, that remainder of that suit costs a whole lot. It goes without saying. So, you know, it is important for people to know that the people, and I'm talking about North Tampa, the city of Tampa. We've had so many other areas. We've heard a lot from our friends in South Tampa and the terrible hits that they've taken and we're obviously supportive a hundred percent there. You know, the people that I talk to, they're really going through hell still. You're about four months past this hurricane, past Milton, which was unexpected, very unexpected. I remember, and I'll talk about this during the pumps, talking with the administration going, why don't we have sandbag locations? Well, they go, well, it's not a flood zone. And that wasn't unreasonable, by the way. I'm not doing that to point the finger, but just to say that nobody anticipated flooding out there, most of all the people that live out there. So for me, this should really be just the beginning of the commitment that we're going to have to this area to assist them. Again, it's important to note that North Tampa is what I call the blue-collar and working-class backbone of our city of Tampa. It's a place filled with first responders, with teachers, with welders, with electricians, nurses, et cetera. And also, by the way, it's a lot of people who don't always believe that government's going to fight for them, which is why something like this is so important. You see that nationally. We could talk about that for a very long time. But a lot of times, people don't believe that government is going to fight for them. And I know that a lot of times in North Tampa, the many, 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 many people I've talked to who have taken life source hits often believe that. And so this, I think, is a real step in the right direction. And I know, because again, city council is filled with good people who have big hearts and are compassionate, empathetic people. I'm very sure this is going to get unanimous approval. But the issue of North Tampa is not going away. It's not going away on a number of levels. We're talking differently and I know I just met with our, the consultant that we work with the county to get for the independent review. The issue of transparency is one issue. But the issue of, number one, dignity and respect for people like Miss Self who came here. I think of the tragedies that people are going through. I think of my friend Gwen Torres, who some of us may have seen on the news, a wonderful woman who has an autistic son, an autistic grandson. She had a sensory room in her house that she had tailored to her grandson who she took care of. She was flooded out and Gwen has had to move because she can't afford to live there anymore. Because guess what? She can't afford to pay her mortgage and she can't afford to pay her new rent. She's gotten some help from FEMA. You talk to people who, it's going to cost them a hundred and fifty thousand. They've gotten five thousand, ten thousand, twenty thousand, far off from what they need. And again, these are working-class people. So for me, this is really the biggest issue in Tampa. We talk a lot about affordable housing and workforce housing and making sure that the city of Tampa post-COVID doesn't turn into Miami, where people who are working class and in the middle class and people who are working poor and marginalized and struggling to become working class and middle class can have a shot at having a house. North Tampa is one of those places where they've got a shot at it. And like Miss Self noted and like Miss Keeney noted, this is something that could radically transform the face of North Tampa. So we have to have a long-term commitment to this. I think this is great. I really hope that people strongly support it. But for me, this is something that should just be the beginning. May I have one more minute, Mr. Chair?
No.
No?
Quick.
No, I mean.
Yes, one more minute, one more minute.
You may have one more minute, sir.
I know. Thank you, thank you. Gee whiz. So like I was saying, and again, and if I go on about this, it's because I represent this area and I'm very, very, I'm going to be honest. Look, I'll be honest. I got a chip on my shoulder about North Tampa. I do. Because North Tampa doesn't get the kind of attention and respect that other parts of the city do. We see that again and again and again. We're going to see that with fire. Where we had a station in the city of Tampa, Station Thirteen, off Bush Boulevard, has one out of twenty-three stations, took one out of seven calls here in the city of Tampa. That's the kind of stuff North Tampa needs to deal with. And now this area got an unanticipated kick right in the face. And it's taken us a hundred and twenty-five days to get here for three million dollars. So if I'm a little bit emotional about that, if I got a chip on my shoulder about that, then you know what? I got cause. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Clendenon and Hertak and Carlson.
You know, I definitely appreciate Councilman Viero's advocacy for the district that he represents. I mean, it's admirable and that's what you should do when you represent a district, is you fight for like hell for the people that you represent. So I appreciate that. But I am elected citywide and I would like to say that, you know, this, this act by God and these hurricanes were devastating to so many neighborhoods and working-class neighborhoods. You know, you have, people forget that there's areas, I mean, you know, Palmetto Beach, we have areas in south of Gandy. You know, again, we talk outside the city, you know, the city districts along the rivers and a lot of working-class people were, you know, just horribly harmed. I too was up in Forest Hills right after the storm and I toured folks' houses and literally went out to my car and cried after I went through a family's house with a mother, father and kids and they did not have flood insurance and they were living, they couldn't afford to go anywhere and didn't have any help and didn't have the resources at the time. And they were living in a flooded home with everything soggy on mattresses that were elevated and that was the only dry spots that they had in the house. I'm going to cry now, right now thinking about it, it was so bad. So it is, it's an awful situation. You know, unfortunately, you know, the city of Tampa, we're only so big, budget's so big, so much resources and so much of this is, we're dependent. This is, this is the thing about the purpose of government. You know, why we live in the United States of America is the government, you know, federal government has to stand up these emergencies. We have a shared, we have shared resources to share the burden of these types of storms. You know, FEMA is, they have, they have the emergency assistance for the short-term stuff, but it's difficult to get the communication out right away, which I think part of what we saw after these hurricanes is, you know, when they, we stood up and the city government did, you know, tried to coordinate and connect and I think us as members of council, we tried to connect the community to resources that were available. And we, and I think it's admirable, I think the city of Tampa has really risen above and beyond level of expectations of what a city can reasonably be expected to do with something as devastating as an act of God and the impact that we had back-to-back storms on top of the previous rain events that we had prior to the storms that created some of this, some of these issues. Again, this, I think, was very creative. I applaud staff and I applaud Councilman Viero's advocacy for this and staff to dig deep because again, there's just, you know, you've got all these other, you know, programs in federal and state, but not necessarily something the city is equipped to do, but they dug deep, really scratched, scratched everything they could find to find these resources. Obviously not enough. I mean, a hundred times this is not enough to compensate for the folks that have lost things and the needs and the hurt that has existed in the city. But at least it's something. And again, I applaud staff for bringing this forward. I'm obviously, and I can't imagine anybody on this council is going to support against this because it's the right thing to do. But thank you and, you know, and I know there's a lot of hurt in the city and I feel bad for everyone and hopefully we'll be able to overcome this and we'll have a lot of lessons learned. Hopefully the federal government and the state of Florida will step up and do their fair share to help put some of these people right and we can move forward and rebuild our city. Thank you.
Councilmember Hertak, Carlson, Miranda.
Thank you. And I do also want to echo and commend Councilman Viero for his advocacy on this. This is absolutely a critical issue. But I have some questions for Ms. Feeley that really, what I'm hearing from the community, and this is something that, that your office has worked tirelessly to find. Ship funding and recreating it was really wonderful. And, you know, unfortunately, sometimes that does take a little bit of time. Can you come and speak to what the residents can expect coming forward? A timeline for how long it will take this, this partner to come up with, you know, a phone number for folks to reach out to? Because the question I keep getting asked is what's next? So if you could just kind of provide us with what comes next, I think that will make the community feel a little better and they will also know, you know, what, what to expect because it's not going to happen tomorrow.
But I'm hoping it's going to happen very soon.
Oh, yes.
I was on a call this morning actually asking when we can get that schedule finalized. I do not have that for you this morning, or I would have been very eager to share it with you. So we, like I said, we already had a call with the company yesterday as to. So we, like I said, we already had a call with the company yesterday as to outlining those next steps. I'd like to say, I hope, it, we were working on follow-up with that this morning. That's why I'm looking at the information that came in. By March 15th, I mean, about a month from today, you know, starting the pre-app screening, do you live in the city? Okay, you know, are you income eligible, or what's your income? You know, those types of things. I think the intention is that there would be a very short pre-application screening that would then become the full application once you pass those first five questions, and we would go from there. So what I need is about two weeks to work with ICF to get that schedule finalized, so I can come in here and tell you. And yes, there will be a phone number, but I think that's one of the things while Councilman Vera has been extremely passionate in pushing this, I've come back and said, you know, I don't wanna put out something that's half-baked because that's not fair to our residents. And I am still standing on that position. So I'm gonna get those details, and I will get them back to you. But I hope by March 15th, at the latest, at the latest April 1st, to have a full system up and operating where they're calling in. And we were also talking about having a community night or a weekly night at Hannah if people need to walk in and get assistance directly from our staff in filling out the applications, or they don't have a computer. We're gonna be working on that as well as a communications plan to ensure that the information is getting out to everyone.
Thank you. And then one additional question. As we're waiting for this, what kinds of information can people begin to gather?
So these funds are right now going to support mortgage assistance. I think one of the elements that Councilman Vera just spoke about is we have a lot of residents that are paying to rents, or they're paying their mortgage, and then they're paying to stay somewhere else. So this will allow for mortgage assistance up to five thousand dollars. Also repairs. If you hired a contractor, you already paid your repairs, you permitted them, you know, you'll be able to get some reimbursement on that. We're working out the time period for that, so people know. And then also, insurance deductibles. If you've had to pay your deductible, or, and, and and there will be a financial hardship statement that they will need to be filling out to show. And then, as I mentioned, given that these are ship funds and ship disaster relief funds, those income qualifications, and that's, the chart is in there, that we do have certain amounts of these funds that by the state, the way that the funds have come from the state, they have to go to individuals of certain incomes. And then up to the 140, we do have a portion of that that is unrestricted, but restricted up to the 140 AMI.
Okay, and I appreciate that for telling what people can expect. But, but as they're waiting, what kind of documentation do people need to be gathering? It sounds like they need to gather their mortgage information. They need to have receipts. They need to have.
Income statements, yes.
So people can start to gather any sort of financial information surrounding this.
Yes.
So, and I, the only thing I, additionally, I want to mention is that we have a workshop coming on February where we're talking about the money that was left over from FY '24. And so that will be another time that we can discuss what we could possibly, if we could put more money towards this. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Carlson, Moran.
Ms. Feeley, from the discussions so far, probably people watching would think that you have to live in New Tampa or North Tampa to qualify for this. Can you just state on the record?
These funds are available citywide.
And then?
You do have to have had storm damage, clearly.
Yeah.
And we have, per our post-storm assessment, we have ideas, and we know because our code enforcement and inspection staff did go through the city lot by lot. And we have a windshield survey of those areas that were hit. So you can't, if you were in a high and dry area, this isn't, I mean.
No, I just wanna make sure people know. And then, and then you said that the maximum, again, for the people who may apply for this, the maximum for rent is five thousand. Is that total or per month?
That's going to be total.
Okay.
For the mortgage assistance, not rental. This is not for rental assistance.
Thank you. And then for repair, what's the maximum?
Right now, the maximum for repair would be twenty thousand.
Twenty thousand. And can they get both or just one?
I believe they, I believe they can get both.
And then what about the deductible? What's the maximum on that?
The deductible is ten thousand dollars.
Okay. Yeah, I just wanted to make sure everybody knew that if you don't live in, in North Tampa, New Tampa, you can. There were people affected throughout the city. Thousands of people were affected in South Tampa. And contrary to some people's perception of South Tampa, there are people that live below a hundred percent AMI. We had some here last week. And in, especially south of Gandy, but also west of Dale Mabry, toward Gandy, there are hundreds and thousands of people who live, live below the poverty line. And, and many of them don't have insurance. In Port Tampa, there are historic African-American folks there whose houses they have inherited multiple generations, and they didn't have insurance because, because they've owned the house, because their great-grandfather, great-grandparents owned the house. And so we need to make sure we, we are careful to not just target one area. And there are also nurses and, and police officers and firefighters. Nick Stacco lives south of Gandy. And, and there are men and women who serve in our military and that are retired from our military who lost everything. And many of them lived below the poverty line. You know, I'm disappointed with the mayor and the administration that they haven't spent more time in South Tampa. They've spent most of the time in New Tampa and, and to promote a hundred and thirty million dollar project in South Howard that we know now is not gonna work. And we need to make sure we pay attention to the people that are, that are really barely surviving and not gonna survive in, in South Tampa. To the point about sandbags, it's a good point. There should have been sandbags in New Tampa. But there were only two places in the second hurricane anywhere for sandbags. There were no tarps. And, and the people in South Tampa, the lines were five hours long because, because we didn't have enough sand. We weren't using the machines. It turns out we had a shortage of sand, which we shouldn't have had, especially with FEMA's help. So people from South Tampa went to East Tampa, and they, then that line, those lines became four or five hours long. And so we need to fix these problems next time. More importantly, as we're looking at money, if we pay to repair people's houses, their houses are gonna flood again because we haven't fixed the underlying problems. We had a long discussion last week on maintenance. We know it's millions of dollars, if not billions, for maintenance. We've gotta put every dollar we can toward maintenance because of people, even if we pay for people to renovate their homes, the floods are gonna come right back in and hit them. We've gotta fix the underlying problem. If we have a choice of adding additional money, yes, people desperately need money for their own homes, but it doesn't do any good if we repair them and then they flood the next week because we didn't do proper maintenance. This three million dollars is a, is a great symbolic effort, but it's, it's not enough. It's barely gonna touch anybody. And, and, and we don't, the city does not have the money to solve this. We've got to find, we've got a team of lobbyists. We've got lobbyists in the city. We've gotta find other sources of funds. And you, you are working in federal agency here, but FEMA money isn't enough. We've gotta figure out where the money's gonna come from because the city, even if we use all of our budget, it's not enough to make everybody hold. We've gotta find a way to solve this problem. More importantly, we've gotta solve the maintenance problem so that we don't flood again. Thank you.
Councilman Moran.
Thanks very much, Mr. Chairman. I want to, sincere thanks to our colleague Vera for spearheading this from the beginning. And, and let me say this. There are seven councilmembers, four in the district, three at large. All of us are responsible for what happens, no matter where.
That's true.
Can't just say I'm a district or I'm citywide. Everybody works together to work things out and get it better done. However, as I listen to the conversation, there's one thing missing. We're repairing the houses the same way they were. That's great. But it does not solve the problem of flooding. You may put all the sandbags you want in front of your door, but you can't put them on a window that's two and a half feet off the ground. Still gonna flood if it goes to two and a half feet. So you, you have to understand that the world has changed. Last year alone, the bay was 2.5 degrees hotter than ever before. Just yesterday, I'm listening to the news, and based on today's compared to last year's, it's already three degrees to four and a half degrees in different areas hotter. So hurricanes are not gonna go away. In all my time living here, I've never seen six or seven come this way. They usually get in the Gulf and go the other way, west. They came east. So things are changing, and it's gonna get harder and harder to sustain the lifestyle that we have. You cannot continue to put, now the drywall people are gonna come after me, drywall in any building because it's like a sponge. If it goes a feet and a half, it goes, it travels up another foot. You cannot continue to have ease on your house. You cannot continue to do things we're doing because that's the way we've always done it. The code's gotta change. The building has gotta change the way we build things because we cannot sustain what's coming. It happens everywhere. North Florida had snow, a couple of inches. When does that ever happen? You go to California, they've had multitude of problems. In fact, most of the people that I read about, half, a great percentage, I can't say half or something, but a great percentage of the people are relocating from California to Texas and other states, including Florida. So we're looking at something, and we're not addressing how to solve it. We're trying to fix it what we have now, and that's it. That's not good enough. And I'm not trying to preach to everyone, but if we don't change the way we do things, you will never solve the problem. Never. But let's see what happens. I, I believe we need to look at the building codes. I believe we need to do how you, how you build roofs. You go to the islands, any island off of Key West, Bermuda, Bahamas, all them, Cuba, all them. They don't have roofs that are made like we are. They don't have the overhang, two feet till the wall, the wind picks it up, the walls collapse. You get water from the outside of water rising from the floor. You don't have that. Why? Because that's the way they built them, because that's what they had to do to combat the storms. They don't have drywall. They got cement inside, and when it gets wet, you let it dry and paint it. It's not that simple, but it's done. You don't have the roof that falls off. You don't have the shingles that fall off because they got concrete with rebarbed wire all over the houses built, and it will not come apart. So what I'm saying is, although we've done some wonderful things for the public, we have to look for the long term because I hope my projections are wrong. It's not gonna get any better. The storms are gonna get worse. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Can I get a motion? Move this resolution.
Okay. Abby Feeley, I just wanted to clarify one thing. It is a maximum of twenty thousand per household. So you can get funds from both, but it cannot exceed twenty thousand total.
Thank you. I have a question, Ms. Feeley. It says here mortgage payments must not be more than thirty days overdue at the time of application. So if somebody's behind on their mortgage, they would be precluded, or?
That's correct.
And why is that?
I believe that that's a state regular.
That's what I thought.
Because these, we have, and, and this kind of brings everything back together. But when we bring our action plan to you for housing, that's where these strategies go. So the strategies are governed by the state in terms of when we put them in. We actually amended it, but because these are state funds, I believe that's where. So I've met, so we had four community meetings in the past two weeks. One in Port Tampa. We were in Port Tampa Tuesday night. We had about sixty people. J.C. was in Copeland Park last night. We had, I think, about ten people. And then the week prior, we were at Palmetto Beach, and we were also at Babza Harris Forest Hills area last Wednesday night. So we've been meeting with a number of people, and a lot of them are paying both right now. So I think this will be helpful in that aspect. I mean, I met a woman who's still paying her mortgage and then was renting a small shed or from another person to be residing in. So we, we have been out listening. I think these funds will work that way. But it will allow us to then help get them caught up and moving forward.
And I think, if I may, Mr. Chairman, to Councilwoman Henderson, I don't wanna.
Councilmember Henderson, did you wanna speak, ma'am? Please unmute yourself. We, we can't hear you. Is she muted, or do we have her muted?
Well, maybe Councilman Vera.
Yeah, Councilman Vera, go first, and we'll go back to Councilwoman Henderson.
Thank you very much. Wanted to address some things, which is with the thing, with, with North Tampa and the South Tampa thing, right? I happen to represent North Tampa. It was North Tampa that got flooded. New Tampa was not flooded at all. It was the northern side more so because you got North Tampa, New Tampa, whatever that did it. With regards to the comments about the administration, it, it's funny. I mean, I've, I'll be honest. I've had a lot of back and forth with the administration over the last hundred and twenty days, not all of which have been pleasant, right? Because we, we've had some disagreements and, and caustic conversations. And, but, but we're here with this three million dollars. And I say caustic conversations because it's been very stressful over the last few months as the district council member for North Tampa. It's been very stressful, and especially seeing these people who are good, good people, like everywhere, good people, just take these unanticipated hits. And the times that the administration was out there was often in town hall meetings that I called for, and because, it's not because of anything with South Tampa or anywhere else. It's because I frankly said, let's get people, four days after this unanticipated flood, and we had a community meeting with like two hundred, two hundred and fifty people out there. So a lot of that was because, I guess, as the council member, I kinda push things a lot. And I think, again, for this, I salute the mayor a hundred percent. I think that's wonderful. A couple of things really fast, which I may, I have asked Hager, who does such a great job for us, to look at additional funds. And so there's a lot of different things that we may look at. And in terms of this being an act of God, I wanna be sure, because again, I represent this area. That's what we have that independent review for. And, and I wanna make sure that that's certainly something that's there. So again, we got to fight, fight, fight for people like this everywhere, whether it's in South Tampa. Councilman Carlson's very right. There's a lot of working class, blue collar people in South Tampa, a lot of them all over. And we gotta have their backs after this hurricane. So I'll move it if nobody else.
Wait, Councilmember Henderson. Let's see if it's still muted.
I'll second that.
Is there a microphone that is unplugged, or is it built in? All right. We have a motion and a second. Let's do a roll call vote.
Carlson?
Yes.
Hertak?
Yes.
Clendenin?
Yes.
Henderson?
She's saying yes and thumbs up. Is that legally sufficient?
No. She looked lovely.
Can she, can she write it down?
No, because if it is an audio recording, I think there are disadvantages to remote participation, I have to share that. But that's just the way it is.
Okay.
One that I look like a halo watching my students run.
Vera?
Yes.
Miranda?
Yes.
And Maniscalco?
Yes.
Motion carried unanimously with Henderson being absent at vote.
Yes, ma'am.
We have thirty minutes left, and I don't think that's enough for a robust conversation. I just wanted to get anybody else's feel on that.
Wanna break at twelve thirty? I mean, I think an hour.
Okay. No, I just wanted to talk. I just wanted to make sure that we're all.
All right. Then we'll look at breaking for lunch.
This might be a two-hour conversation.
Let's break for lunch at three.
Excuse me, Chair. Can you hear me now?
Yes, yes, ma'am. We can. We can hear you.
Okay. Well, thank you. I just wanna make sure that I have a voice in this process. I appreciate it.
So, Mr. Shelby, is it possible to reopen the vote so she can be reported on this vote?
Yeah.
Okay, I make a motion to reopen the vote and allow Councilman Henderson to talk, and then we can revote.
All right, we have a motion and a second.
Thank you, Councilman Clendenin.
All right. Yes, yes, ma'am. Do you wanna speak, or do you just wanna go ahead and vote?
No, I'll leave it at that. I appreciate all of the comments. Councilman Vera, thank you for your work on this, as well as, you know, Ms. Feeley and her staff. The impact is, sadly, it is low. If it's five thousand dollars, it's six hundred and forty people. If it's twenty thousand dollars, it's a hundred and sixty people. So I know it's not significant, but it is a start. And, you know, it is the city's way of contributing to, you know, giving some relief to people. So thank you for your work in this.
All right. We don't need to close, but we have, it's not a public hearing. We have a motion. We have a motion to, Chairman, yes?
Just for the sake of clarity and the record, a roll call vote on a big ticket item such as this, I feel it would be best interest just to do a roll call.
Yeah, so we have a motion, who was the original motion maker for 60? Vera was the maker, and Clint Dennen with the second, roll call vote.
Carlson? Hurtak?
Yes.
Clint Dennen?
Yes.
Henderson?
Yes.
Vera? Miranda? And Maniscalco?
Yes.
Motion carried unanimously.
All right, Councilman Vera, 22 and 67, you asked them that they be heard first?
Yeah, so, I mean-
Before, I have a number of questions, et cetera, I don't know if the, if, is there a presentation, or? With Chief Trip, Mr. Mutterback, is there a presentation at all, or?
I guess I can go with questions.
He has a written report regarding 67.
Oh, I know, yeah, yeah.
Do you want to kick it off?
So, yeah, so I'll go ahead and do it. So I do have a lot of questions, well, some, and Mr. Mutterback, we obviously, so, what I did this, because this is a very, I have very strong feelings about this issue. And so I wanted to meet before to go over my strong feelings, to give folks a chance to, number one, prepare the right response, and just to be transparent. But I want to go through, so, we're dealing with fleet maintenance, which I think there's some use on, if I'm correct. And then with Station 24, which has had a relatively long journey in its present version. In 2023, we passed design for Station 24. That was the year that the administration tried to do their 1.0 millage tax increase. I had proposed scaling it back 70% and having that full 0.3 going to police and fire. Didn't get support for that, it is what it is. We go forward, and so I go, listen, if we can't do ongoing revenue for this, then we're going to bond it. So I did a motion for that, and it would wind up passing. And then one year ago, we, it was about one year ago, we finalized the mechanism by which the administration could use funds for fleet maintenance and for Fire Station 24. So what's interesting is, is that we're here about a year and a half past the time when we, I believe, funded design, around roughly September of 2023. And I had thought that design was something that was substantially finished. I know I spoke to Mr. Stocko, and he did as well, certain assumptions, et cetera. So I guess my message is, is that council has empowered everybody with the tools that everybody needs to get done what Chief Trip has been pushing very hard for. And I say that because when we asked, there were a number of projects, and we asked Chief Trip, and we're looking at bonding, what are your two big priorities? And you said fleet maintenance and Station 24. So we're running with your vision, Chief, and we appreciate your vigor in that regard. But here we are a year and a half later. So we got a new timeline that's showing groundbreaking in March of 2026, which is going to be, what is it, two and a half years after we apparently passed design? So there's questions in that. And then what's also unique is, and I'm giving out all this information, because I've been involved in this, obviously, it's my district. And we've had, I think this will be the third station we've gotten in North and New Tampa. We had Station 23 in 17, Station 25 in North Tampa, and then 24, 25 comes after 24 for a number of reasons. But this was a compromise, because there were folks in the union who said, we'd like a different location than this. And so we go, well, guess what, we've got the land, so we can move with vigor, right? And here we are. So that's a lot of where the frustration is. And I could go through, we've had, gosh, I think seven or eight motions over the last eight, or last year and a half on Station 24, including, I think, quarterly reports. So I guess that's, that's, forms the basis of my questions, I guess. And Mr. Mutterback, if you could, and we spoke about this, sir, if you could, go through the process with land survey, evaluation, et cetera, that we've done since, and I'll just start September 2023, if that's something that you can opine on.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Good morning again, Richard Mutterback, Director of Contract Administration. Go through a little time, progress timeline here. So Contract Admin's involvement started April of 2023, when the city and fire had this property and wanted to look at to see if it was feasible for a fire station. So we entered into an agreement with Otero Engineering in April. And that agreement had about five months allotted for those studies. And the first stormwater plan was given to us in August, and we had some corrections and revised in October. And the final site investigation report delivered to us in November. So slightly, slightly over the five-month anticipation that's we're like. At that point, once we have that information in hand, that's when the city, fire, the administration decides, okay, we've been told this property is feasible, do we want to move forward with building a station here? So from November through May, Contract Administration was, again, involved in preparing for a design build RFQ to go out. And what that entails is investigation, I mean, interview process between my project architect staff and TFR to see, what do you need here, what do we want here, what are we going to be looking for? Because the design criteria package that they put out for these RFQs, that's what the, you know, submitting firms have to go off as what we're going to be expecting. And we, you know, we're pushing a lot more of preliminary assessments and those sort of things going in, so that we get more reasonable costs, more reasonable expectations of what we can expect on these larger projects. So, so you've got, so in that timeframe between November and April, we put together that design criteria package, May it was advertised. And the advertisement period, it always takes five or six months at best to get through that. That's state statute, there's certain deadlines that are built into there, notification requirements. So we went through that process, which got us through August. And all this is still typical timeline, like, there's been no real delays or anything at this point. We had presentations in August from four different firms. From those four firms, one was recommended to the mayor for selection. We selected Jay Kokolakis, October the 9th, she approved that selection. And we had a kickoff meeting in late August. And from August until December, that's when we're working on, that's when we start this initial agreement that's in front of you as item 22, that's when that negotiation and scope, back and forth between the firm and TFR and Contract Administration happens. Keep in mind, though, between, in that timeframe, it's usually about a two- to three-month process. If there's any delay there, there was two storms, and, you know, fire is emergency management. But, but still, if, from that point, I mean, and just if I may?
Take your time, please.
I just want, just so that, you know, so this, this document, this schedule tracker, this is something that just, I don't know if you can see at the bottom there, I printed this September of 2023. This is an internal document that we use, that kind of gives us, we use in planning and that kind of thing. It gives us an idea of how long these things will take, so that we can, we can present to our, you know, our clients, the user departments, how long these things should take, how long we can tell you. And they're pretty, they're pretty spot on. So if you'll notice this line here, these months here, so from the time we post, you know, there's a month for this, a month for this, a month for this, you know, we got all the way over, and now here we are at City Council Design Agreement. And there is one, four, five, six, seven, there's eight months between the RFQ posting and when we're in front of, and if this posted in May, we're right at eight and a half months right now. So we're right on schedule for what, a typical design build project we see, you know, in the city takes place. So, and so that's where we are as far as on the timeline.
Thank you, and so I'll go through the timeline in a little bit, but I do want to confirm something, which is you said that groundbreaking could be around March of 2026. Again, given that, and I understand some of the issues you've gone through, and we'll dissect that just a little bit. But given that design was funded in 2023, for me, that's just a lot. And especially, again, and I made reference to this, which is, you're talking about North Tampa, you're talking about help for Station 13, which was the 54th busiest station in the city of Tampa, took up one out of seven calls. Station 25, that passed, I think in '22, and then we opened it in '20, no, no, '21 and then '22, was a good down payment on that. So, you know, given the real emergency with that, and that was, I remember, Chief Trip with Joe Greco, the first joint-like priority that we had, what can we do to double up and move forward to have a quicker groundbreaking? Because I'm going to make some motions on that, but I want to, I want to get your thoughts on that, sir.
There was, there's a few items that we're going to do to try to, you know, in this agreement that's in front of you, it lists 461 calendar days to get to that point, okay? And as far as, and just for reasonable business, I mean, the few items that I presented in my memo that we can do, one of the bit, one of the time-consuming parts is the back and forth between the firm and the city reviewing every step of the way. We want to make sure that at every point, at the 30%, 60%, 90% GMP, we're reviewing everything. And we, and we're deferring to, you know, the user department who needs, it's for them, so we're deferring to them as well. So we, that review time, one way that we think we can expedite this process is, we're in the process of hiring a project representative to work with fire. And actually, that, that, those presentations are coming for us the 27th of this month, where firms will act on behalf of TFR as project managers. They don't work for Kokolakis, they don't work for CAD, reason being, you know, Chief Trip saves lives and fights fires. She doesn't know, I'm sorry, but she doesn't know construction and architecture and engineering and reading these documents, that kind of thing. This is the same thing we've already put in place for TPD on one of their larger projects. It's something we're pushing for on any of the departments that don't have engineering and construction, you know, divisions within their departments. So having someone onboard that knows fire, that knows public safety, that knows construction and architecture, and is relaying that information back and forth with Chief Trip and Chief Milt Jenkins, you know, that's going to expedite the review time. When the firm presents us with documents to review, and that goes to fire for their review, that's going to expedite that process. And there's like four stages in there, so each one of those, that's cutting off, I don't know, potentially, you know, a week or two weeks in between each one of those.
So, so I'll be making a motion that goes to that, but, and quickly here, and Chief Trip, did you have anything to add, ma'am? I just want to make sure we weren't, anything to add to this substantively at all presently? I know you're, but I do have a question, and I see Mr. Stocko there, and we're going to want to hear from them as part of the motion too. Do we have any addition with fleet maintenance, or any update with fleet maintenance and real estate at all?
Good morning, Councilman, first and foremost, I want to apologize for a little delay, but you guys moved very fast with the agenda.
I know, surprisingly.
First and foremost, thank you all for everything you're doing to try to get us this, get this fire station moving forward. And thank to Contract Admin for their assistance as well. But it was a couple of items that you had mentioned in the beginning with the introduction, I just wanted to address. And one was fleet maintenance. So we actually currently have a contract on some property.
That's great.
Just on disclose all the information, but we are in progress with that, and I'll just definitely keep you updated on that.
And that's great news, thank you. So we're thrilled, and is that, is that in city limits, by the way?
Yes, it's definitely in city limits.
I know Councilman Clint Dennen had mentioned outside.
Yes, no, we have been looking everywhere, and of course, we had some that wanted to lease, and some just wasn't big enough, and we think this piece of property here is big enough for what we're looking for, for the two facilities for supplying fleet, as well as there's other areas in it, other properties within the area that could be potential to add on if additional room is needed. But that's a plus, I got those good news yesterday, so we're moving forward with that.
We're thrilled, and again, y'all got the money for it, so go forth, please.
Yes.
And thank you for that, Chief. And for Mr. Mutterback, when was the original survey on the land done? Because it was my understanding that there were surveys and assessments and evaluations done on the land prior to 2023.
Well, my familiarity is with what was provided as part of the Otero Engineering Report.
Okay, is anyone, can anyone in the room opine on when any assessments or evaluations or surveys were done in the land?
That would have been the only two, I mean, that would have been the assessments that would have came through Contract Admin. If there was a property survey potentially by real estate, I just don't have that information.
Okay. So, and I have, and again, and I don't, I don't want to take up all the council's time on this, but for me, the big issue is, look, we are where we are, okay? And, and for me, you take a look at Station 24, in 2023, I remember when we passed the design for that and the vigor and the emphasis that council put, stating that we want this thing built really, really soon, let's put a priority on it, and so forth. And here we are, two and a half years later, and we're just getting started with design. So we can go through that, but my big thing is moving forward with vigor. When I hear that we have fleet maintenance going forward, that's great, I think that's wonderful. And I think that, and I'm not going to make any motions on this, but I'd love to see some movement too on something with downtown, but whatever. But when it comes to this, I'm going to motion for a monthly report to take place at the last regular session of each month, beginning in March, on an update on 24 and fleet maintenance to include reports from Tampa Fire Department, or Tampa Fire Rescue, Mr. Mutterback, and the project manager, so that we can keep a forceful eye on this. Because again, I, and we spoke a lot, you know, privately for like 45 minutes on the history of it and everything. And I'm sure you weren't looking forward to today's questioning after, after you got thick skin, God bless you. So that's what I'm going to be motioning for, because I think that's something that's very important, that we've got to really move forward, because again, I emphasize, the reason why we put a priority on Station 24 was because of the history of Station 13, which was, again, a big priority for 75 Forward, Chief Trip, moving it forward, finishing the job. The good news is, is that once we finish this, the men and women at Station 13 are going to have the real support that they need, which is great, and they completed jobs. So I'll let Mr. Trix know a lot of other people.
Thank you very much. You know, if you look at a lot of the fire stations, the mid-century ones from the 50s, Tampa in a very, very short period under the Nucio and Lane administrations, it was like one after another fire station. And they worked with swiftness in investing in fire, you know? And I just, I would like to see that in modern times, you know, now in 2025, because this is a long time coming. And as everything, Councilmember Vera said, the demand is, our city has grown so much, the amount of calls that some of these stations are running, you know, I think this is such a necessary thing. And I'm glad that this is on the agenda today with the design build and moving forward and everything. So Councilmember Carlson, your microphone was on first, and then Councilmember-
Yeah, thank you, I, I just want to say I agree with Councilmember Vera. Maybe I'll say a little bit stronger, I'm frustrated that it's taken three, four years for this to go forward. Not blaming the two of you, but it's just, it's just frustrating in lots of ways that hasn't gone forward. It's not in my district, but Councilmember Vera and the union and others clearly showed the need for this, and how we needed to improve response times. And so I supported it multiple times, like my colleagues did. You know, a need in the city, especially when you are talking about people's lives, is, it doesn't have geographic boundaries, so we need to make sure we support it. The frustrating thing, besides how long this has taken, is that, that also the union and other experts have been demanding additional stations in places like downtown and South Tampa. You know, we need some kind of marine unit stationed by me and by Nick. If the truck goes out, there's less coverage in our area. They've asked for additional vehicles, they've asked for stations to be rehabbed to prevent air pollution, other issues. They've asked for new equipment. And it feels like some of that has moved forward, but it feels like everything has been backed up because of this. And I hope that this, that this moving forward, first of all, I hope it moves forward quickly, because there is a need, and there was a need three years ago, so there's even more of a need now. But, but as this goes forward, I hope we can release all the other projects that need to go forward and start moving quickly on them, because it's not fair to our firefighters, and it's not fair to our citizens that we haven't invested in fire safety the way we should have. Thank you.
Councilmember Clint Dennen, Hurtak.
Thank you, Councilman Carlson, I'm glad you brought up the staging, because I think that's part of the, part of the problem that we've seen, at least since the time, two years now, or almost two years I've been on council, is, is kind of like scattered approach. And I think that Chief Trip has attempted to come forward with, you know, a schedule and realistic approach of like, what we have to accomplish, and Councilman Hurtak has talked about that fleet maintenance, you know, joining this whole, all these things, we have to, you know, we have to do A, B, C, D, E before we can accomplish it. And I think that's part of the frustration, I think that's part of, we have to stay as council, and it's difficult for seven of us sometimes to herd cats, to be able to stay focused on that agenda and be that kind of, and inject that kind of logic into this process. So I think that we have to constantly revisit that. You know, just like the downtown thing, I think, I think we've kind of moved past the idea, hopefully, we've moved past the idea-
hopefully we've moved past the idea of additional station and more into the idea of we have, we have room as fire station one to expand that. And hopefully as we look forward in the future, as far as the need assessment of what we need down there, that's probably the direction that we should go as far as a cost benefit analysis, it seems. So I think if we can stay focused and kind of guide in that direction, that maybe we can facilitate and get these things done in a much more expedient and cost efficient way. And I, I, I share some of the frustration of this beat. I mean, you all know that I'm a passionate advocate for mass transit, transportation and of course, the streetcar and the, the path is slow. If you don't know, I, I get monthly updates from staff on the progress of where we are with the streetcar expansion. And I think maybe instead, and some of the things, a lot of times, you know, these council meetings drag on for, forever, I might suggest that, because especially in this time of the process, that it comes back to council every three months and you get a personal briefing every month on this progress, because, you know, these construction, these construction progresses, I mean, this, but every, but every 30 days is kind of, there's not a lot of movement in a 30 day process, where orderly there is. Yeah. And so I think that as far as efficient use of time, I think that's probably the most efficient use of city council time would be my suggestion. And then, and if anybody wants the personal updates, they can get personal updates for, for council time, I think that's probably more efficient and more efficient use of staff time too, because all these things take up an awful lot of staff time. And then when they're working and doing these things for us, they're not doing what they need to do to move these projects forward. That's all I had to say. And I don't, who's next? Councilman Hertak.
Thank you, and I really appreciate the conversation that has occurred. And that has really been about timeline. I'm going to talk about money, because $24 million for a fire station is just simply not what I see when I have asked around. By and large, we are looking at an 11,000 square foot fire station. And I had, we, Mr. Mutterback and I had conversations back and forth this morning and one of the things he said was that most people came in around $11 million for that. And at that, that's $1,000 a square foot. Can you explain that first before I?
Well, that 11 to 14 million dollar construction cost, that takes everything. That's site development, that's, that's the building, that's FFNE, that's everything. That's not, your cost per square foot is your, is your, your steel and concrete to build the building, I mean, you know, basically the building. It doesn't take into account any of the site improvements or anything else that has to go into play.
Okay, so then.
So that skews that number just a little bit.
So, yeah, no, 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 and I appreciate that, because we didn't have time to flush that out, which is why I'm asking now. So my other question then, that's 11 million. Where's the other 13 million coming, going? Like what's, why do we need 13 more million?
Are you talking about what's budgeted?
Yeah.
Because the RFQ was, well, there's this 2.3 million dollars, which is for the design. And if it's 11 to 14 million dollars for the construction, then you're up to potentially 16 or 17. And then you've got the furnishings and equipment and stuff outside of what would normally be there through TNI. And, and I think, I think in this particular one, there's even, is there an apparatus? Is there, there's a truck involved, like for the station, I think?
I think they put one in.
In that budget?
I think we actually have it in there.
Yeah, you have to come to the microphone, Mr. Trip.
My apologies. Yes, I think that was included in there for an engine, but we actually through our replacement plan for vehicles, we actually have one ordered.
Okay, so we can take vehicles out of it, because what I'm, what I'm seeing, what I found was that in, in asking, I asked Ms. Kapeski to look and see what other stations were around here and, or that are being built. And so the city of Bradenton's building one that's going to be done in the last quarter of this year and it's 15,000 square feet and they're building it for 7.9 million. Palm Coast has one that's going to be done at the end of this year as well, same thing, quarter, quarter four, 2025. That's 10,000 square feet and there's, there is more. Theirs is design and construction of 11.4. So it sounds like the 11.4 is right, but what I'm looking for, and I believe that Ms., Ms. Scharf just gave you the, the spreadsheet that I had gotten, oh, she has it, from Coca-Lockus for the TPD impound lot, they had a spreadsheet that basically broke it down, because I wasn't sure and that was what I wanted to know, where, what is detailed in all this and these, some of these things. So Coca-Lockus is working on two other projects in the city of Tampa. They're working on the TPD annex impound lot, that's not going to be an impound lot, and the solid waste facility relocation. So in looking at their fee of 2.3 million that we're approving today, their, their, their share of that is 21% of the 2.3 million. But when we looked at the, the share for the TPD impound lot, their share is only 13.7%. And then looking at the solid waste relocation, which is a gigantic thing, that's also, that's only 12.7% and I'm wondering why, and these are recent, these are things that we just did. So if it's 12.7% for this giant solid waste relocation and 13.7% for the impound lot, that's not an impound lot, sorry, it's written on there, that's why I was reading it, why it's 21.1% for their cost here for this project?
Can I back up to your previous statement?
Sure.
Regarding, if, if these fire stations are being built and opened up this year, that means those agreements were likely in place in 20 or 21, because they, all these projects take three years, as you all see. So we're basing that off numbers from 2021 and we all know that numbers in 2021 do not reflect numbers today. So if they're building, does that make sense?
It does, but I, I, I just.
I mean, that's, that's, that could one potential explanation of why, you know, that regard. Also locality, there's a lot of things that come, that can come into play here. As far as the pre-construction services on, I mean, these projects are, they're site, site specific, they're project specific. And as far as the spreadsheet that breaks down everything in the, in, for this agreement, I, I do have that coming to you. I just, I did not have my hands, I'll have to get that from Coca-Lockus. They have it to, to break down all those. But, I mean, this particular site, this is a brand new site, there's nothing on it, it's a vacant site, there's stormwater issues, there's wetlands, there's environmental concerns. I mean, so, so, I mean, you can't really, it's not apples to apples, you can't compare, because that, those, those services fees for Coca-Lockus, that's how much involvement they have to have. They have to decide how much involvement am I going to have in this project? And if it's a more complex site, if there's more, you know, more, more team, team, more people on their team to, to manage, you know, across the thing, I mean, that's, that's where that would come into play, that difference would be. It's not, it's not a cut and dry difference percentage wise, project to project.
And, and I appreciate that, but, but, I mean, that, that's my responsibility as a council member for a project that is this expensive for what we're seeing in other areas, it's half the price. So if I don't ask these questions now, I mean, this is, like, we, we can't, we can't move forward doing, I mean, I, I don't know how we're going to afford to build $24 million fire stations over and over again. So I, I, I am, I am concerned about that, because we need to build more fire stations and we need to find a more cost effective manner to do it. I mean, right now, we also have, in the grade eight, you've got a public safety training facility renovation for 17,000 square feet, that's only costing 13 million. I, I, it's just, it is, it is glaringly different and so I'm really looking forward to seeing the spreadsheet report, because that's really what I've wanted to know, is where is all the money going?
And that spreadsheet is only going, that's only related to this initial service agreement, this 2.3 million dollars.
But, but that's what I'm saying.
Because they have to develop those costs as part of the design and what the construction will be. And just so I can clarify to the rest of council in my response to you regarding the cost, you know, I can't really speak as to why things cost so much, but in, in those estimates, FIRE and CAD went to Orlando to see one of their brand new four bay stations that just opened up. We got on several phone calls with Hillsborough Fire, talking about stations that they've had built recently and are in the process of building. And additionally, we had four qualified presenters for this area to come to Tampa that submitted and all gave us basically the exact same range. So I can't, can't speak to why it costs that much, but that is the cost that we're, that we were citing.
Okay. So again, I would just love to see the differential between, I, I don't know, I, I'm just having a really hard time with you saying it, it'll cost, or that folks are saying it's going to cost 11 million and then it's the 24 million. That's just a, it's a huge differential. So that's it.
Councilmember Viera.
Yes, thank you.
So I was going to make, may I make a quick motion, sir, that's related to this?
Did you need to bring up Mr. Stocko?
I was, yeah, I was going to say that, thank you for that, if Mr. Stocko wanted to come forward. And you know he does.
Hey, good morning, US City Council, Nick Stocko, President, Local 754 Tampa Firefighters. Thank you for the opportunity to speak today and also over the last couple of weeks and months, I want to thank the city staff and the department heads from Contract Admin to Gene Duncan, Brad Baer, Richard Mutterback and all the others that have met with us to explain to us this process that they're explaining. From a timeline purpose, we're wondering the same thing. We're wondering, how did we get here so far late in the game? In the CIP project, if this was the 2017 to 2021 capital improvement program, why are we here in 2025 having those same discussions? But by looking in the rearview, we're not going to be able to move forward. We need to move forward, we need to approve this project and the budgetary questions are valid. If the design build agreement is 2.5 to 2.6 million, whatever the exact number may be, and the, even at $1,000 a square foot for an 11,000 square foot facility, that looks at 13, 14 million dollars, where's the other 10 million dollars? A truck company can be 2 million, an engine can be a million, a rescue can be 600,000. However, that doesn't equate to 10 to 11 million. So I think those are valid questions, that I hope to have those discussions and, and get those answers. I would challenge to say to move forward with this project and then look backwards and say, well, how much did it actually cost, right? To see if we're, the numbers that were given are, are, are supported. But I, I do want to thank City Council and the city staff for affording us the opportunity to be in those timeline purposes from the legal CCN process. They've, they've, they've done a really good job on educating and informing us. But we can look forward, let's look, let's, let's, it can look backward, let's look forward. Let's move forward on this and I look forward to it, I agree. Councilman Viera, thank you so much for wanting to do the monthly, right, the 30 days, let's, let's put some pressure. Maybe we could put some pressure on a monthly, but publicly, the quarterly may be more productive, right, understanding that construction, not much gets done over 30 days unless we go out there and help them build it. Thank you for your time, if you've got any questions, I'm here.
Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you.
Councilmember Viera, before you make your motions, are you going to follow up with, well, it's Councilmember Hertak's committee, but then move 22?
But, may I make that, move the item, whatever, 22 was?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah.
Move the item. All right, we have a motion to move item number 22, which is pulled for this discussion, second from Councilmember Hertak. Let's get a roll call vote.
Clint Denny?
Yes.
Henderson? Henderson? We can't hear you.
Uh-oh, muted again.
Yes?
There we go.
Yes, yes, yes.
Viera?
Yes.
Miranda? Carlson? Hertak?
Yes.
Amen and Skoko?
Yes.
Motion carried unanimously.
All right, Councilmember Viera, you have.
Yes, sir. And I, and again, and like Mr. Stocko said, I thank staff, including Mr. Mutterback, because we spent a lot, lot of time, was it yesterday or the day? It was Tuesday, man, I'm sorry, long, long week, but thank you very much. And again, this is to promote the, the agenda with vigor that I know Chief Trip and the union have, have moved forward on with regards to North Tampa that, that started back in 22. So this kind of finishes it, which is great. But, so what I'm going to do, council, is to make a motion for quarterly in-person reports, but then otherwise written, like every month, if that's good. And, and I can meet with folks and whoever wants to can, just so, I, I really want to keep this on the forefront for obvious reasons, like we have. So I motion for monthly reports, quarterly in, in person, otherwise in writing, to take place the last regular session of each month, starting in March, which will be in writing, on an update on Station 23 and fleet maintenance station to include reports from Chief, I'm sorry, 24, thank you, Chief Trip, Mr. Mutterback in his office and the project manager. And this would include updates on the date for groundbreaking.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Second from Councilmember Clendenon. All in favor? Oh, Councilmember Miranda was the second, I'm sorry. All in favor?
I.
I defer to the old.
You have to do a roll call, I thought, because I'm.
Wait, let's do, let's do a roll call, let's do a roll call. So it's Viera, Miranda, roll call vote.
Henderson?
Yes.
Viera?
Yes.
Miranda?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Hertak?
Yes.
Clendenon?
Yes.
Amen and Skoko?
Yes.
Motion carried unanimously.
Thanks.
Can I?
Yes, ma'am.
While we are on this topic, so I'm, your motion was focusing on the, the status of Fire Station 24? Okay, great. No, well, I would like to do a separate one for fleet maintenance. So I see that Ms.
That included that, but if you wanted.
I would like to do it separate, only because we are, we are at a different point. So I'm actually have a question for Ms. Van Loon, because I see her in the back. You came early and I spotted you, so I'm going to ask. So we have been gifted the wonderful news of knowing that we have an offer. Can you just briefly tell us, you know, on the average, what does it take from between offer to closing on a property?
Michelle Van Loon, Real Estate. So right now, our goal is to renew that contract February 20th, pending all the, dot your i's, cross your t's, if not, worst case, March 6th. The contract would be for a 60 day contract and it does include two 30 or 60 day extensions. The only reason we would need an extension is if the phase one environmental came back and said, we need to do a phase two. If we run into issues, we're doing a topo and a tree survey. So if we run into any issues with our due diligence, then we would need to extend. Otherwise, it is for a 60 day closing. So if all of our due diligence comes back clean and we're all set, we would close 60 days from the time the mayor actually signs the contract after you approve the contract.
Okay, so just a nice, and Mr. Mutterback is standing there, talking, saying he would like to speak to you, but it sounds like worst case scenario, if all goes, well, four months would just be a, that's a, that's a good ballpark. Mr. Mutterback?
Yes, ma'am, Richard Mutterback, Contract Administration. Before you pick that date, as far as when we're going to report on the progress, I was just going to state that we proactively have already, we have a, a presentations next Thursday for a firm to do an overall assessment on the needs of FIRE and fleet, which, which would go into, you know, going, it's one of those preliminary reports, so just, just, I just wanted to let you know that.
No, well, actually, you were going to my next question, so what are we doing to move forward with starting it now that we've focused on a site and you've answered that question?
That, that assessment will be coming to you, I mean, we're having those presentations on the 13th next week. And that is, like I said, to do an assessment of the overall, it's a needs analysis, spatial analysis, part of that was to assist on property acquisition, but now that scope will shift to, you know, the spatial analysis of this particular property and, and its feasibility. So that, we'll have a better idea once we get that agreement in place and that will come before you, then we'll know the time needed for that before, then we could actually look at starting the process of the RFQ.
Okay, wonderful. So I will actually leave that under Mr. Viera for now and then if we need to tease that out, that's basically what I was hoping for.
And I can give updates on that particular portion of it.
Yes, that would be wonderful as part of that, just because, I mean, we're not going to, we're going to move this ball faster than the other one. So thank you so much, I greatly appreciate it. And Mr. Stocko, while you're here, do you have anything that you want to add about that? And Chief Trip, if, if there's anything in particular, it sounds though that you're already working with fleet on that.
Good afternoon, Nick Stocko, Tampa Firefighters, President. Thank you for that and bringing that up with the fleet maintenance and channel side. I was actually just having a conversation with Councilmember Viera and yourself the other night and I did briefly mention to the CFO, and as, as much as we like to say thanks, we like to give a little challenge as well. If, if we can include multiple projects in that RFQ, so this CCN, CCN, I'm sorry if I mistaken that abbreviation, can include more than one project, since that seems to be the longest piece to it, maybe over a time span, some kind of, if, if it can be included in that RFQ, maybe two, both of those projects, fleet maintenance and channel side, to get done within that X amount of time to include multiple projects in that RFQ as kind of like a promise. So we do give a little challenge to it, but we look forward to it. Thank you.
Thank you, and that actually brings up a good point, um, and a challenge that I will give to my colleagues. Uh, literally every time somebody comes to talk to me about any type of development, they want to do a pre, you know, this is what we're talking about, this is what we're thinking about, I bring up a fire station every single time, what are you doing to work on it? So, I'm, I'm sure Mr. Vieira already does that as well. Uh, so, yeah, that was, those are my questions, I'm happy to hear that, um, the Fleet is moving along.
All right, we talked about staying until 12:30, do you think we can squeeze in 68?
I was going to say, yes, is that a public record?
Yeah.
That should be very quick, I think.
Okay. Um, Chief Trip, it says that you were going to appear in person to answer any questions regarding the public safety records request on, by Local 754. And Mr. Stocko is here, and since we're all here together, so you don't have to come back after lunch.
Yeah. And Mr. Brody's here too.
Yeah, Mr. Chief Trip, if you'd like to start it off?
Just trying to pull my notes up here. Sorry. All right, um, Chief Trip, Fire Chief for Tampa Fire Rescue, and I guess this have to do with the, um, records requested by Local 754. The records, one of the sections that I know that, um, President Stocko is inquiring is for some data for '22, '23, '24. That's data that doesn't exist without creating a record, and basically, when you ask for a public record request, the reason, the amount of money that was quoted, because this is information that individuals will have to actually go in because of the outdated equipment that we have. We have a CAD system, of course, 30 years old. And the information that I do have available is '18, '19, '20, and '21, well, actually, '17. And that was the data that was created, um, when I did the need analysis in '21, '22. So, if this additional data was needed, that's why we gave the quote, not that we're trying to just up, upprice something, but it's actually going to take time for individuals to go in and look at that data and give that information, because everything is manual. And not to mention, the data that they're requesting, because the system is outdated, it's, it's one of those things where it's hit or miss, because when individuals have to go on the air to go responding to a call on scene available, of course, they're fighting for radio traffic because of the outdated equipment. And a lot of times, if dispatch is not available, of course, they tell them, put me available 2 minutes ago, 5 minutes ago, 10 minutes ago. And of course, that, 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 once we get this, um, new CAD system in, which we, thank you all for, um, approving the, uh, CAD system, we've already had one meeting, we have another one coming up, um, in the next couple of weeks, and we're going to hopefully have this done within the next 15 months. And of course, there'd be steps along the way for the CAD projects.
Yes, ma'am, and, and I didn't know if, if Mr. Stocko or Mr. Brody or anyone else had anything to add to this, I was going to give my thoughts on it. Okay, thank you, um, Chief, I'm sorry, did I interrupt you, ma'am?
No, 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 I didn't know if you wanted, because once again, I went through the legal force, uh, trying to find out information about the typical public record requests.
Yes, ma'am, thank you. So, my understanding of this, and guys, everyone, please correct me if I'm wrong, is that in 2018 or so, um, under a separate system, the union did a similar request for information from which they, um, worked with the International Association of Firefighters to do what I call the Public Safety Master Plan. And so, um, the union wants this to do their own updated one. I know in 2022, the administration did the Fitch Report for their Public Safety Master Plan, which I think is probably due for some update report before council in 2025, I motioned for. Um, but the union wants this, um, so that they can have their own report. Um, and, and so, Mr. Brody, please correct me if I'm wrong, sir, which is, you're, you're saying that that they, the administration can't be compelled to respond to a public records request through the creation of a separate document, and that the only way to get this would be through, prospectively, a motion from council to identify the issues that are necessary so that we can acquire the information. Is that your legal opinion?
Thanks, Carl Brody, Legal Department. Yes, the, the, uh, public records law provides that we don't create any record, so, though records might exist in one format, if they don't exist in the requested format, we don't create it for, to be able to be provided in that manner. And I think what we discussed before was just that the inspection option is available for, um, that's, uh, for anybody to come in and take a look at the actual, um, electronic records that exist. Um, moving forward, I think there are options, um, I'm not exactly sure how it would work with, um, in, in terms of council's authority related to, uh, Fire Department and, uh, the administration, but, um, it would probably be distinct from a, a public records request, so.
Uh, thank you, uh, Mr. Brody, and, and Mr. Stocko, the provision of potentially inspecting the records, um, we met on this a few times, was that a no-go, was that a, that's not a viable option for y'all to get the information that you need?
Yeah, Nick Stocko, Tampa Firefighters Union President, I think that's a, that's a great, uh, option that we were provided. Uh, however, it's the same information that's turned in when a department goes to get accredited, if it does. So, if the department is submitting any information to get accredited, maybe now would be the good time to just ask for that same information.
So, how about this, this is what I'm going to propose, council, is I'm going to, um, speak to you, and at the end of council, make a motion on the narrowly tailored information that we can get, if we have that authority, which I would think that we do, um, and that would be unavailable through the, the inspection option. Does that make sense?
Yes, yeah, it does, I, I, I think we're getting, we're getting there very closely.
Good.
Um, I think we're getting there, and hopefully, we, together, we can cross that finish line.
And, and I'll tell you all this, council, so we've been meeting, and a lot of bridges have been built on this issue, which is good, and we're almost there, so, yeah, so hopefully, so we'll talk.
Councilmember Clint Denon.
Yeah, I, um, as everybody knows, I'm kind of a labor guy, but I have a question about this, because, again, that line between the administration and, and council authority. So, did you use, so maybe this is a personal joint understanding of you. Maybe this is a, maybe a joint understanding of the information, if the, if the labor organization needs this for negotiation or, or grievance protection, um, they should be entitled to the information that they're requesting, correct?
Right, but we're not in that, again, Carl Brody, Legal Department, we're not in that context right now. That's when you're in an official labor negotiation, that's when-
But even if it's, even if it's in midterm, if there's, if there's, if there's an issue that's pertinent to, um, their condition of employment, or, you know, the, all the covered items of, of, uh, wouldn't this be considered a ULP if it wasn't, if we didn't provide information that was pertinent, something that was part of their condition of employment?
Right, but, but not at this point, right now, we're talking more in informal discussions on providing these, these records, so it's in the context of a public record request at this point.
So, it was a public record request and not a, not a labor management-
Correct.
Record, okay, so that's, that's very different.
That's distinction.
So, so, Mr. Stocko, why did you choose to use public record request and not the, the labor avenue that you have available to you to be able to request that information?
Nick Stocko, President, uh, Tampa Firefighters Union. Every month, we meet with management, uh, the Fire Department. We requested this information in person several months over time, and we were directed by the Fire Administration to put in a public records request.
Okay, so, I, I would urge you to, um, one, was it in writing or verbally? I would, I would, I would urge you to go through your LMR op- opportunities to put it in writing, at least then you have a legal, you have a legal basis of being either approved or denied, and then you have recourse. Um, if you use your, if you use your, the power that's given to you by statute, um, if, if that's, if it's something important to you. Because I think, uh, Councilman Vera, you know, hinted at it a little bit too, there's a fine line between what we as a council can do and what the administration's responsibilities are, and you have that relationship because of your status as a, of a, representing your bargaining unit, and you can use those rules and those laws to your benefit to be able to acquire that information if it's needed for your ability to represent your workforce, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I'll make that motion at the end of council.
Yeah, once you-
Because I want to make- Get as early tailored as possible, obviously, asleep. Because if the inspection, it can accomplish 70%, then we'll try for the 30%, that's all. I, I need to first speak to Nick on it, yeah, and, and TFR, yeah, we got, we, I, I want to do it right.
Councilmember Hurtak.
Um, are, are we done with this item for now?
Yes.
Okay, so my only request is that when we come back, uh, '64, '71, and '72 all have to do with stormwater, so, I, it would be great if we could hear them all at the same time, that's just a, so, I would just like to add '71 and '72 to '64, which will be next, when we get back.
All right, we're in recess until, yes?
I, I just want to say one quick thing, um, item number 70, again, is not my motion, it was, it was made three, four years ago. Um, in, in talking of several folks in the community, Councilmember Goode's listening to the, the, the public comment today, uh, there's a proposal by the community, even the folks that are in favor of using this gentleman's name, um, want to keep the name Fair Oaks, and so, a proposal has been floated by the community to, um, to name a building, like the prominent building, after, uh, Ms., Mr. Gambrell. So, I just throw that on the table for discussion, if, it's not, again, it's not my motion. If you all, uh, think, would like to start the process on that, we, we can talk about it, if you don't, then we'll end it, thank you.
Councilmember Miranda.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and, and in fact, Mr. Goode did send it to all of us at, uh, yesterday at 7:44 PM, in the two offices, really, our East Tampa Complex at Fair Oaks, with a new building being named Artist Graham Bell Senior. And, you know, Mr. Graham Bell was here for 45 years, working diligently, and, and he helped a lot of people in his community to get jobs in the city and so forth and so on, and, but this is not unique, in fact, many years ago, it used to be Time Brenner Stadium, I mean Yankee Stadium.
Yep.
And myself and Roast Alita led the charge to change it to Yankee Stadium, Georgetown Brenner Field.
Hmm.
And that's how that started, so, basically, this is basically the same thing.
Yep. Councilman.
So, I mean, this is exactly, I think you're exactly right, and this is what I tried to do earlier for the discussion. I think we should need to remove item 70 from the agenda so that this, this park remains Fair Oaks, because it's place-saving, and this is what the community understands where it is. And I think that some, maybe it's Councilman Henderson or someone else that takes up the, because we have a new process on renaming, so if we're going to rename the building or something else there to, as tribute to, uh, Mr. Gambell, uh, Senior, that, that we start that process, and somebody needs to take ownership to walk it through, and that's what I think we need to start now.
If I may, I want to put this receiving file on the record.
That's the email from Councilmember-
The motion or receiving file on that, yeah.
We have a motion and a second on the favor.
Excuse me, hello?
Yeah.
Wait, Councilmember Henderson.
That was just receiving a file and email.
Yes, ma'am, go ahead.
Well, item 70 to be discussed after lunch.
Yeah, well, we're going to talk about it, they just-
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, I, I, I didn't understand this, you know, prior conversation prior to lunch, you know, happening now, and, you know, making it a little bit confusing, I guess, you know, the public is probably following this as well. So, rather than, uh, speak twice, I'll just wait until after, because I do have several comments regarding this. And I think it's important that, um, the district representation that exists be heard. While I appreciate the, uh, former council member's, um, letter, he is now a public citizen, and his letter can be entered into the record, but to read it publicly, uh, I think would also be very inappropriate. If he wanted to come and make public comments, he had an opportunity to do that this morning. But to have him stand out with a letter is unacceptable as the district representative, and I'm saying that publicly, and I'm saying it to all of my council members. I actually see it as a form of disrespect. Nevertheless, we will discuss this item after lunch, and Chair, I will speak at that time, uh, regarding it.
Okay, we're in recess until 1:45.
Thank you.